Welcome to the June 28, 2022 City Council meeting. If the clerk will please take the roll.
Ford?
Here.
Mukerower?
Here.
Hansen?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Wojciechowski?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Mayor Paul Mary.
Councilmember Ford will leave us in the invocation as well as the Pledge of Allegiance.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for all the people whom we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move on to the presentation from the Boatworks Redevelopment, council, if I could have a motion and a second to waive the rules to allow a council member to participate virtually.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? This will take the roll.
Ford?
Aye.
Mukerower?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Carrie Pootsick.
Mayor Paul Mary is now present at the meeting virtually. And Mr. Hess, if you'd like to take the podium on your presentation.
Sure. Let's see here. So I've got here Boatworks Redevelopment project. Thank you for letting me come and speak tonight on this. My name is Tim Hess. I live at 2645 Templeton Place. We're proposing a workforce affordable housing project here. And by "we," I'm referring to myself and my business partner, Chet Wiesenberg, the architect in town. We are doing all the development work. We are, Chet's designing it, we're going to general contract it, and we plan on owning it long term. That's the hope anyway. So going through some slides here for you. If you don't know where the Boatworks site is, it is on the south of the river, between Oregon Street and South Main. If you know where the old family video store is, now Marco's Pizza. Just to the east of that is the old city sanitation garage. Just to the east of that is the Boatworks site that we're looking to work with. To the east of that is the large Morgendorf parcel. To the south of that is mostly residential, single-family homes. To the north is the Riverwalk and the river. So we are interested in it. We like it. We like being close to the river, but there's some warts to the site that I'm going to talk about. So kind of give you a history of this site. If I were to show you an aerial photo of 1950, you would start to see just some docks and piers in that little inlet there. 1964 photograph, you get to see the entirety of the buildings that the Boatworks Marina had on that particular site. You also see the, what is now the old city sanitation garage, and you actually get to see a railroad spur there. In 1990, the DNR issued a citation to the owner of the Boatworks site suggesting that, hey, there is a leaking underground storage tank. You need to fix that. By 1995, presumably that was fixed, and the DNR issued a letter to the owner at that time that said, "We are willing to issue you a case closure on this site so long as you are willing to accept a deed restriction on the site." By 2001, a deed restriction was recorded on this particular site. And in effect, it says that there is the possibility of petroleum-impacted soils still remaining on that site. And to the extent that you plan on doing anything in those areas disturbing that, you have to do testing, you have to report the results to the DNR, and you may have to substantially remediate that. So that's the deed restriction. In 2004, then, the DNR did issue a case closure letter to the owner. And in late 2004, then, the city commissioned a Phase II environmental assessment. Now admittedly, at that time, all of the original Boatworks buildings were still there. So they were limited in terms of work that they could do soil borings to test for environmental issues. They didn't find anything horrendous there, and they kind of reaffirmed what they expected, that anywhere along that river, you anticipate finding fill soils. And that means you can't just dig a hole, pour foundation, and build up on it. You've got to do geo-piers or aggregate piers to support the foundation of that, providing a fair increase in expense to make something work on that particular property. So in 2005, the city acquired the site. There's a photo there in 2010 where the city had demoed the majority of the Boatworks buildings. And then there's a photo there of 2014, or I'm sorry, 2017. But in 2014, the city completed the Riverwalk, and as part of that, they cleared out all the remaining docks and piers and, in effect, have it looking like it is today, where it looks like it's just a, an empty lot. In 2016, then, Morgan Partners came in and said, "Hey, we want to develop our site. We want a TIF to be created." TIF number 29 was created, and they were proposing a bunch of multifamily, I believe they were proposing a grocery store at the time. And so these two, well, this particular site, the Boatworks site, was included in that, and so too was the city sanitation garage site included in that TIF. So I'm not asking for a new TIF today. We just want to utilize the TIF that's already there. So talk about what it is that we're proposing. Here's our site plan. On the Boatworks site, we're proposing to put 26 units. On the city sanitation side, we want to put 30 units, but I want to be clear. This is something that we presented to the RDA. We've talked to city staff about it, but no one's guaranteeing anything here. This is kind of our intent, but I'm here to talk about specifically the Boatworks site. And all my numbers and stuff going forward is going to be specifically to just the Boatworks site. Part of the issue is, nobody has done any borings on that city sanitation site. I have no idea what's there. I know that there was a railroad spur there, and I know the cost. If I run into, say, a Creosote railroad tie underneath that somebody didn't want to deal with, that could be really expensive. So we're interested, but no guarantees on anything. So here is the Boatworks building that we are proposing. We're proposing to build 26 workforce-affordable, one-to-two-bedroom apartment units on that site. So, okay, workforce affordable. What does that mean? Let me first define affordable. Typically in housing, we say something is affordable to somebody if they spend at most 30% of their income on the housing. We would call that affordable then. So workforce affordable, I'll first define what people typically consider low-income affordability. Low-income housing is definitely anybody who makes 60% or less of the community median income or less. I do remember my days of serving on the Habitat Board, and I know there are some federal programs that allow that to go up to 80%. So 60 to 80% or less is definitely low-income housing. Workforce affordable is kind of the next range in that continuum. So now we're talking, say, between the 60 up to potentially 120% of the community median income, and guaranteeing that those people would spend at most 30% of their income to have affordable housing there. So to give you an idea, I'm showing the rents there on one or two bedrooms. One bedroom, we're talking $900 a month. Two-bedroom, two-bath, we're talking $1,100 a month. If I do that calculation backwards and say, what does somebody have to earn to make that affordable? Well, for the one-bedroom, it's $36,000. For the two-bedroom, it's $44,000. So that's, you know, a new teacher, a new nurse kind of thing. That's kind of what we're looking at. In comparison, I could bring up, you know, the Brio Building is something that recently went up. Those apartment units there, you would have to make $70,000 to $80,000 for that to be affordable for you. I could compare to, say, T. Wall's proposal on the Mill on Main. For those to be affordable to you, you have to make $104,000. So we're doing a bunch of the high-end, others are doing a bunch of the high-end stuff. We're looking for the workforce affordable, to give you an idea. Of course, to make this happen, we have to sacrifice some amenities. We're not doing the underground parking. We're not doing a big exercise facility. We're trying to make it, back in my Habitat days, we always said, "Simple, decent, affordable." That's what we're shooting for here. Our overall investment that we're proposing is $4.2 million. And again, like I had said, this is in an existing TIF district. There are 22 calendar years left in the TIF district. We know that any TIF payout is delayed by two years, so that means there's 22 years of effective payout. Our ask of you guys is, we would like 90% of the increment over the course of the 20 years that are remaining on this particular TIF site. If I go and do the calculation and say, what is the net present value? What is the contribution being given to make this happen? The net present value of 90% of the increment over 20 years is roughly $760,000. Our estimated 10-year annual internal rate of return is 5.6% with TIF. Without TIF, I think it's like 1.2%, which we would have zero interest in doing. So what is the benefit to the city? Well, I would say, hey, look, here's this parcel that has been undeveloped for 17 years. We're willing to do something on it. And if I look at the housing study that the city recently commissioned and finished, you know, it talks about, we need a whole range of housing. And that, you know, we've worked on, we're presently working on Smith. Others are working on the higher-end stuff. So here, we're kind of focusing on the lower end of the middle range type thing. So that's what we're hoping to do. So that's what I have. Any questions?
Councilmember Miller?
So because it's an existing TIF, you're just looking for a development agreement? Is that, so pretty cut and dry?
I hope so.
All right. Thanks.
Councilmember Ford?
There's no means testing or anything, though, correct? Right? Anybody could correct these places?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I appreciate the presentation this evening, council. This is a number of years ago. We asked TIF applicants or potential TIF applicants to come to us in advance of that. Gives us time to ask them questions, hear about the project. If not tonight, feel free to reach out in advance of their application to learn more about it directly.
Wonderful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hess.
Thank you.
Moving on, we've got a public hearing. Resolution 22-249. Approved final resolution for partial right-of-way vacation for the portion of East 8th Avenue on the east side of South Main Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Is anyone here to speak on this tonight? Second call, anyone here to speak on Resolution 22-249? Third and final call, anyone here for Resolution 22-249? Seeing none, public hearing closed. I'll take a motion in a second. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, if you'll take the roll.
Ford?
Aye.
Mukerower?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Pootsick?
Next, we'll have citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting, and must not include any endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Who do we have up first this evening?
Brian Peterson.
Mr. Peterson. Actually, if you'd like to visit this one over here, you can. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Just wanted to comment on the voluntary drinking water PFOS sampling project from the DNR. PFOS compounds are fluorinated compounds. They're commonly used in everything from firefighting foam to food wrappers, Gore-Tex, a lot of different items. This is from the DNR website. The sampling is voluntary and is available to all municipal water drinking systems in Wisconsin. The DNR will partner with participating communities to facilitate sampling, communicate results, and support follow-up actions. Impacted communities may be able to access resources from bipartisan infrastructure law. The DNR will work closely with impacted system and communities to leverage all resources available. The purpose of the sampling project is to get data to communities to know that they are providing safe water to their residents. Through funding from U.S. EPA, the state of Wisconsin will fund local communities that wish to sample for PFOS. If the DNR receives additional federal or state funding, the sampling effort may expand. And this is from the Department of Health Services. The sum of PFOS, basically the sum of all of these compounds adds up to 20 parts per That's the amount that the total sum of all these chemicals should not exceed. I understand that this municipality, Mr. Raab, is not participating or has not participated in this program up to this point because the concentrations of these compounds and the strict procedures that must be followed, they're such low concentrations, that it's difficult to sample. I also understand the city of Oshkosh is in the process of developing a PFOS information page on the city's website. Thank you for getting started on that process. The fact that the concentration of concern is so low is the reason I'm here asking to hurry the pace of the testing. The statement from the Health Services Commission that we should not exceed 20 parts per trillion that would imply that just 12 gallons of F-triple-A firefighting foam would be enough to contaminate all of Lake Winnebago. That's just from Google. So there's 6.6 trillion gallons of water in Lake Winnebago, so if you do the math, that's how it works out, 12 gallons. I would also say that just from the latest fluorinated firefighting foam survey, the average fire department in Wisconsin currently has 30 to 52 gallons of expired foam in need of disposal. The survey goes on a state with 95% confidence that the total amount of foam held by all 825 fire departments in the state is at least 23,700 gallons. It might be as high as 44,700 gallons. So again, just quick math, at 20 parts per trillion, that's enough to contaminate 2 quadrillion gallons of water. So yeah, I would just ask that we can move that testing forward on the agenda if possible.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Next on the list.
Deb Atkinson?
Thank you. I just have some questions. I'm here to ask about the changes and casualties that are to take effect July 4th and 10th. As of July 4th, there will be no rides on holidays except private planes. As of July 5th, there will be no Sunday service. Now, I don't, there should have been a public hearing on this. Did I miss it? Or when was that? How come you guys all look surprised? Nobody knows about this, huh?
No, Ms. Atkinson, I know the contract was altered. There was a change in the contract for this.
Okay, why wasn't there a public hearing on that?
Mr. Roloff, if you can speak to the process, if you'd like to, just if city staff would...
Sure, I think what I'll do is ask Mr. Collins, because this was discussed at the Transit Advisory Board last year.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
A year ago?
Yes.
Yeah, our public hearing process is that public comments on any policy changes are held at the Transit Advisory Board. So the holiday, or not, providing service on the six holidays, that matches up with the city holidays and also with the transit holidays. So at some point in time, the paratransit service went over and above what was required, still does, but those six holidays were not included in the current contract to match up with the city holidays and allow...
It's $100,000 a trip, one way. My husband is also disabled. The Bellamy and the Good and Trattana Holiday Eastern Christmas would cost us $160. So do you think those people are low-income? And what about all the people who live in nursing homes? They look very good, the holidays, go get out and be with their families. And now you're going to tell them no. I think that it could have been publicized more. And I'm, all I want to know is why it wasn't publicized more.
Mark, I see you taking some notes here. Can you, can you take a look at this and get back to us? And I think there's a legitimate question here that needs to be answered, so...
Yeah, I know that when the contract was approved, it was explained, but it was very, very briefly. And certainly, you know, when you have somebody who actually utilizes a service, it's more impactful.
It's one more thing to the, most people in this room don't realize, I know two people in the last three years that were able-bodied like everybody here except me. One fell down the stairs and is condemned to a chair for life. Two, the second person is, she felt getting groceries for her family. She's still in the hospital. Until that happens to you, and I'm glad it takes two seconds to fall, you would be in the same situation. So thank you for listening. I pray that you're not innocent ever. You're taking away a lot of rights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkinson. I know City Manager Roloff misses, I apologize. City Manager Roloff will get back to us on this one, because you're absolutely right. You bring up some good points. City clerk, who's next up?
He says Sal.
Yep, if you'd come up here, please. No worries. Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so bear with me. Okay, so, all right, one second. Can you hear me okay? I mean, I don't need to adjust it. Okay, I'll make sure. Thank you. Okay. Bear with me again. I recently heard about the tiny homes village for the homeless facility project. I'm not against projects like this, but I'd like to address the city council about three major concerns I have. One is notifying the neighborhood. Barely anyone in the immediate area was aware of this project and its location. We called to ask about this, and we're talking to the city planner, and he informed us they only had to notify people within 100 feet of the project. That was only literally a couple companies. No one in the apartment buildings, houses, or businesses or within the immediate area were ever notified. Bringing a project this size, I feel there should have been a bit more effort to reach out to the immediate community and the industrial park. For example, some of the companies that could have, could have concerns about injuries or liabilities if kids were to go exploring in the industrial park right across the road. What is the liability, what is the liability to be for the surrounding facilities? Will they have to install safety devices like signs, fencing, cameras? How can they do that if they weren't informed of the community being developed and included in the process? Sorry, bad speaker. Will the grant money that was used to fund this project will be available to assist these companies for the necessary safety upgrades to the surrounding properties? Number two, this is my biggest concern, is the location. This is a dangerous area and not a good spot for children. And the reasons why I say this is, seven reasons. One, there are three large retention ponds right in the area. One is overgrown and deep. You would never know if a kid was down there and in trouble. It's not the two on Main, but one right across next to the industrial park. Number two, you've changed the zoning from SMU because, you know, it was originally zoned this way because it wasn't residential. This is by an industrial park. Three, Packard Ave, Jackson, Main Street, and Harrison. These are all designated truck routes by the city of Oshkosh, and it's a high-traffic area for semis, vehicles, and military vehicles. Just Saturday, one of our neighbors died on his motorcycle less than a block from this location. I just asked, has there been a study done for traffic-related accidents, injuries, and deaths in this location? Four, if they want to go to St. Vincent's or the food pantry attached to it, they would need to cross five lanes of traffic on a very busy road on Jackson where the speed limit's over 25. There's no traffic lights or crosswalk, and drivers are not looking for pedestrians in this area because they don't usually cross there. Five is, there's very, there's very little in this area. Nothing for kids and families to do year-round. I know there will be parks and stuff added to the facilities, but if they want to venture and if they can't travel very far, there's not a whole lot to do for them to be year-round in this area, and they'll be stuck in a very small location otherwise. Six, basically, all the retail shopping, most of the restaurants, a lot Oshkosh has to offer is completely on the other end of town, so you're greatly limiting the access and opportunities for these families. Yes, there is a bus route, and I looked into this. The bus only runs from 6:15 a.m. to 6:45 p.m., Monday through Saturday. If they want to get to, like, Walmart from this location, they'd need to take three buses. It would take around an hour each way if, as long as everything was running smoothly. Imagine doing this in winter with small children. And if somebody had kids and worked full-time across town, how would this work for them if they needed to get home using the buses for the kids after school? Number seven was talking with the food pantry also at St. Finney's. No one has approached them on this project, and I just have concerns about this because this project could bring in over 100 people to this location, and with the demands of the food pantry has gone up with the current economy situation. And I'm just concerned, can the food pantry handle the needs of the village along with the current community needs, especially with the economy going the way it is? I'm just really worried about this location, the safety of families, and potential restrictions and repercussions they might suffer because of the location. If you want to help give these families the best opportunities they can have in Oshkosh, I don't know if this is the best location, just because it's so far away. And third thing was clarity of the facts of the project. This project is moving quickly, but not a lot of facts are known about the project, and I feel it should be confirmed before the project go forward. Like, seven facts, this is it. Will all the residents of the village be, will all the residents of the village be only families, or will there be individuals? What will the requirements of the people be applying? Will it be only families from Oshkosh? There will be a lot of people in a small area. Will you allow people with a history of child abuse, violence, neglect, registered sex offenders, substance abuse, any issues that could be putting children or families in potential harm? If those, if those with criminal records are allowed, will the surrounding residents and businesses be notified, or people with criminal histories? And will also you notify the residents of the village of these histories as well? Number five, who is responsible for overseeing all the people that come into this village? Number six, will the village residents be subject to all normal local housing codes and statutes such as upkeep, fire hazards, noise ordinances? Everything traditional homeowners are required by the city to do. Does the fact that they are in tiny homes and are not owned by the residents exempt them from any regulations surrounded by the property owners that have to follow? And number seven, are there rules tenants will have to follow in order to live in the village? Can the public see those rules before the project is approved? And is there a process in place to evict tenants if they violate those rules, engage in criminal activity, or cause problems to other village residents? Just looking out for everybody's well-being. Okay, and thank you all, thank you all for allowing me to address the city council with these three major concerns. I just needed to make mention of my concerns. If I didn't say anything, if something happened to someone and they got injured or worse in this location, I would just feel horrible. this location, I would just feel horrible. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bellton? Welcome.
Um, my name is Patricia Diener. I am going to be talking on my part and my husband Russell B. Diener. Um, there has been a new development. Him and I went out and checked it out. Um, and you mentioned there might be some fishing down there? Well, years ago, when he was growing up as a kid with his dad, and I'm going to talk to the clubs around here, hopefully they'll raise some money that we can have a dock there. It's right by the Pioneer between the railroad bridge and the Pioneer. It used to go right out to the mouth of the river. Um, and see if something can be done, Kelly and him can work something out with, uh, lining something up, because I know Donnie Herman will help me out. I know, uh, Anderson will help me out. Um, I help with the clubs and we push to put, bring money into the city by organizations for docks and everything. And, uh, I think it would be nice because you, you people are trying to make it nice for people to walk. But you gotta remember, there's people that don't have boats and love to fish. And you're, you're turning people away from out of town. I understand when people come from out of town, they like to make amends. It's all over, even with our people around here. If you're a fisherman and you're a hunter, you'll learn to clean up. If you're not, then you don't care. And, talk about the economy like the young lady just said, with the food pantries and that, um, it's not good. And you people say you're hiring. People have applied for work. I heard today by Public Works, Steve signed his people underneath him to come out to our home to check out the street. They did a good job. And it takes, two kids last night. I thought they had their chain off their bike. So, I said, "Kids, you need help?" Nope. I see a hole. I said, "I've already called in, they're gonna be coming up." But, kept on saying more. But somebody could get hurt. I said, "Well, they're gonna fix it." And I tremendous, and I give a lot of credit to Public Works. They are awesome. And Steve has learned from Mr. Pottek. And you will be doing the job that Pottek did and better. Because these guys that cut grass and do all the work, they work hard. And I know staff is short, it's all over. And with traffic, it's not good. So, what are you guys gonna do with your budget this year? You're gonna be not in, you're gonna be in a hole. You're gonna be in a big hole. And I'm not saying to be smart, I'm saying the truth. I have a friend that has vehicles and he spends fifteen thousand dollars a year on gas. Imagine what it's gonna be. And you know what? Thank God for small businesses because small businesses are making it with the thrive and what they do. And I'm gonna tell you right now that if it wasn't for John Bergstrom in Oshkosh and in Nina and all over, his dad started Gibson's. And that's how that small business started. And we were kids and our parents told us all about these businesses. And he thrived. And there's a lot more small businesses that thrive. Number two is my brother. He thrived. He started with nothing and he thrived. And he, he worked hard every day. And his family, my, his brothers and sisters went down to help because we wanted him to make a goat. And I want to say one more thing is you guys got all these activities going in Oshkosh. Okay, how about when we have the activities, when you guys put, put on a plan, how about getting some carts and start carting people in? You'll get more people. And Oshkosh can do it. If Fondle can do it, Appleton and Green Bay, we can do it. And all it takes is somebody to rent out carts and start carting people in. Because you know what? I didn't make it to Wall-E because I knew there's not gonna be enough parking and I'm not walking. And I went to Wall-E Fest in Fondle, they carted me all the way in and out. And I just hope that you guys work hard and do something for families in Oshkosh. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else registered to speak to citizen statements?
That's it for citizen statements.
All right. Moving on to consent agenda. I'll take a motion and a second on consent agenda. Or actually, sorry, is anybody, uh, registered to speak on consent agenda items?
No.
Okay, thank you. Take a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, you'll take the role.
Deputy Mayor.
Oh.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes, Mayor.
Uh, yes, on two twenty-six regarding our DNR compliance maintenance annual report wastewater treatment plant. Um, if I could pull that just to ask a question, appreciate it. Um, is, is Mr. Godey there?
Uh, he is not, but Mr. Robbie is.
Okay, okay.
Two fifty-six?
Two fifty-six.
Two fifty-six.
I'm sorry, two fifty-six. Uh, yes, Mr. Robbie, um, quick question under the, um, let's see here, I think.
Mayor.
This is page.
Can I ask a question, Mayor? Are you pulling it or do you just want to ask a brief question and keep it?
Just wanted to ask a brief question.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, yes, Mr. Robbie, I'm just, real quick, noticed on the section that asks about whether the facility accepts hauled industrial waste, landfill leachate, et cetera, and we say yes, but the only, um, items listed here are the printer line wash-down water, uh, in part of the pretreatment program. I, I just was curious if that is, um, for certain, the only item that is included in that, uh, accepted industrial waste?
Which page are you on, Mayor? I'm trying to find it.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't see it. Page number one fifty-three maybe in the PDF? Under, uh, six point two.
Um, I, I know there are other items, uh, that are not hauled in. Uh, I know, for example, uh, landfill leachate from the Winnebago County landfills is not hauled in, which is probably why it's not listed there. Uh, that actually, uh, discharges to our collection system and there are a number of other, uh, industrial facilities that are not hauled in, but they discharge directly to our system. Uh, and it does appear that this is specifically asking for materials that are hauled to the site to be dumped.
Okay, thank you. So, that would be those other, um, industrial wastes that we're receiving directly would be reflected somewhere else in the report?
Yeah, the, there are a lot of items that are discharged directly to the sanitary sewer. Uh, the, the big concern here with these industrial wastes being hauled to the facility is, uh, they create what we refer to in the industry as a slug loading problem in the treatment process. Whereas if these items are discharged into the collection system, they are mixed in with the rest of the waste, so we don't see a, a slug load of, uh, whatever materials are in there that may upset the treatment process. And that is why this, uh, question is asking about what is hauled in versus what discharges to the collection system.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion on, anything on consent? If not, City Clerk, you'll take the role on the full consent agenda.
Ford.
Aye.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carrie Stubbins.
Next, we'll have pending ordinance, uh, ordinance twenty-two dash two seventy. Update the bus loading zone and parking regulations adjacent to Oshkosh West High School on North Eagle Street and Southland Avenue. I'll take a motion and a second.
So moved.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I missed a second.
Oh, uh, Ms. Hanson. Seeing no discussion, if you'll take the role.
Ford.
Aye.
Uberhour.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carrie Stubbins.
Ordinance twenty-two dash two seven one. Amend city ordinance pertaining to consumption or intoxicants on street sidewalks, parking lots to allow for open intoxicants within designated outdoor refreshment area. Dora, staff recommends waiving the rules. Have anybody been registered to speak to this?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome.
Hi, hi again. Um, I just have a little something to read and then if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Um, good evening, my name is Jessica Meidel and I manage the downtown Oshkosh Business Improvement District. On behalf of the bid, I am here today to encourage you to vote in favor of the proposed downtown outdoor refreshment area pilot program. We feel this is a feasible way we can work toward achieving two hundred and fifty days of activity per year, recommended by destination consultant Roger Brooks. Creating a Dora district is just a piece of the pie when it comes to this goal. However, we feel it can have a significant impact on economic development, tourism, quality of life and add to the overall experience of our downtown. For many years, the downtown bid has put on countless community events, has made strides in beautifying our downtown district, actively works to recruit and retain businesses downtown and has worked incredibly hard to make downtown a great place for our community and its residents. With the approval of this pilot program, we will continue to do those things along with improving our programming so we can work toward our goal of more activity and activation throughout public spaces downtown. The Dora would invite our residents and visitors to stay longer and to explore all our downtown has to offer. With the Dora, you can grab dinner at one of our downtown restaurants and then enjoy the Dora as you walk to Waterfest. You can head to one of our downtown grocers, pick up supplies for a picnic and enjoy Opera House Square and live music on Thursday evenings. You can check out a First Friday downtown and enjoy watching local artists create live up and down North Main Street while enjoying the Dora. You can check out Gallery Walk and walk from gallery to gallery. You can explore and enjoy community events such as Main Street Music Festival, Jazz Fest, Chalk Walk and more while supporting all of our local bars and restaurants. You can enjoy a beverage while you browse the Oshkosh Farmers Market just as is done at the Winter Markets and Green Bay's On Broadway Market. You could even do something as simple as watch our new mural being installed after dinner downtown this August. This is not an event, it is a district. It is an enhancement to our events and downtown programming, a concept that has been successful and modeled after Dora districts in Ohio in which over a hundred communities have districts, some with more than ten districts per city. This is also not a new concept in our own city. Right now, you can enjoy Dora as you sit in Opera House Square or you can walk from Buckets to Ground Round on the River Walk, but you can't cross the street to the Leech because these are both city parks and open containers are allowed in all of our city parks. If this is something that ends up not working for our city and isn't the right fit, it is a trial and it does not have to continue, but at least we explored a new way to add vibrancy to our downtown that is different and progressive and that is a win. The way we've been able to work together to figure out how this could work in our city rather than just saying no is a win for our city. And that is already one successful and beneficial thing we can all say has come from the Dora. We have one thing, last thing for your consideration. The downtown bid is solely supporting the Dora to enhance our downtown, an area that is greater than just the bid district. Today, you are being presented with two choices when it comes to what boundaries of the Dora should be. We urge you to consider including the six hundred and part of the seven hundred block in the district because we should not include, exclude these continuous and like businesses simply because they do not fall within the boundaries of the bid. By including the six hundred block and seven hundred block of North Main Street, we can include an up-and-coming part of downtown and see how this can have a positive impact. It is time that our city emphasizes the importance of having a vibrant downtown and realize that downtown extends outside of the bid. Again, it is crucial for quality of life for our residents and for attracting people to our city that we have a vibrant downtown full of life and people. Countless consultants, people looking to visit or move to Oshkosh and our own residents have told us so. More people on the streets and the city's public spaces can actually increase safety, adds to vibrancy, spurs economic development and creates a sense of community within our city. Our community can do better to activate our public spaces and we believe Dora could be a significant part of that activation. Both public and private dollars have gone into these public spaces and it is time to bring them to life. As we work to attract more people to our downtown and city, business and development will follow and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Absolutely correct. Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Thank you. And this is not necessarily a question just directed at you, but more so an open question. So, anyone who's gonna plan on speaking in favor of this, please feel free to address it, but, uh, obviously the focus has been on the economic side of this. Um, but I'm hoping that you or anyone else could speak to, address or alleviate many of the concerns that, uh, organizations like, you know, like Winnebago County Health or Breakwater have presented to us regarding the downsides of it. You know, alcohol consumption, um, public safety, things like that. Just give us reassurance, you know, what are, what is your side to that, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, I think we've worked with the city to establish that we will have police presence downtown, so when it comes to safety, um, we have that aspect. Like I mentioned in my, um, little thing, I, um, you know, if you have an increased amount of people downtown, sometimes that can increase safety. You have more eyes on, on what's happening. Um, so, I think people associate crowds or a lot, a lot, a lot of people with, um, negative, negativity, but, um, I don't know that that's necessarily always the case. Um, I think my friends over there can add probably more to that, but I think, um, you know, like I mentioned, the city parks currently allow open containers. Um, so that's something, it is kind of like, like a pre-Dora. So, how has that, um, impacted our public parks? And I, I really haven't heard or seen, um, any super negative impact from having open containers in our city parks, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Otherwise, we'll take the next up and then council will have a discussion and can always invite speakers back up too.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next on the list.
Chris Larson.
Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Chris, can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, Chris Larson, five oh two North Main. Um, I'm not gonna say much about Dora in general. You guys have heard me up here talking about it at length. I've talked to all of you about it at length, but a couple finer points tonight as you're actually evaluating the proposal in front of you, which is good. So, most important to me and what I want to remind you all about, it's gonna come up again later, I hope, is that the number one provision in this is that there's part of this that says the city can turn this off at any given point in time for any reason. And Erin, that might be more to your point from your question a second ago. That's important to everybody who's put this together as well because this is ultimately going to be an ordinance change and that's not something the bid can own. There's no ownership that comes with that, that belongs to all of us. And if this goes poorly and if it doesn't go as we think it's going to, then we need Mark to be able to say this isn't working and it's over now. So, there's no ownership of the success or failure. It can be turned off if it needs to be turned off and that's a good thing and that's a failsafe that I think needs to be built into this no matter what, right? Um, secondly, I want to remind you, as Jesse did, that this is a pilot program. That's a good thing. It's good to try new things from time to time. Um, there's no data yet as to what this does because we haven't done it yet. Once we've done it, I fully expect that there'll be a committee and we'll sit down and talk about it. If this can continue, we'll have to, we'll have to write the right ordinance that goes with it so that boundaries and things are defined appropriately and other metrics that make sense in this, we can evaluate at that point in time. I would hope that having the bid as a starting point for this, as Jesse mentioned, is a good thing. It's taken us hundreds of hours to get to this point. It's not easy to get any kind of thing like this to you. It's really, really difficult. So, as Jesse mentioned, the reason the bid is involved in this is that it's time-consuming and is not easy to do. Never have we proposed the bid district to be the district of the Dora. And that is, again, the part you're gonna talk most about at the end of this, I have a feeling. Um, the boundaries that we presented to you when we were here three weeks ago, four weeks ago, haven't changed since. There's no intention to change them. This is an ever-expanding thing. They're there because contiguous like businesses make up a downtown and that makes sense. So, we think arbitrarily making this the bid district is choosing winners and losers that are separated only by a, an arbitrary line or a, a street in this case. It doesn't make a ton of sense. It will also make this harder to police in the end. It'll be confusing for folks. And again, the intent was never that this be the bid area because that's not sensible to us. sensible to us. That was a suggestion to make the pilot program work, but it's not a compromise in the end. We think it'll make things more complicated. And the pilot program part of this, I think, really is important. I mean, oftentimes, we get to this point with lots of issues and we decide by exemption to not do them because of what might happen or because of what might, might not happen, or because we don't know what's going to happen. I think in this case that enough people have vetted what's gonna happen with this, and there are failsafes built into it to keep it fine if it goes poorly, which I don't think it will, that make this worth trying this time. So I'd appreciate if you, if you would support it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, hang on, I got a question for you.
I don't think I can speak to questions.
You can.
What do you say?
I don't know if anybody knows this, but your, your, your business, and I hate to, I hate to signal you out, but I know you and I can, but-
Yep, go for it.
You already have your own DORA and you have since, since the River Walk came. Is that accurate?
Totally accurate.
So I can buy a beverage, whether it's a martini or a beer?
Yep.
I can walk out of your place, get on the River Walk?
Yep.
Walk up and down the entire, the entire park system, and that, that's okay?
There are certain provisions there and they're included in DORA and that needs to be in a plastic cup or the usual-
Sure, no, no.
A translucent cup, and yes, to your point, on Waterfest evenings in particular, that happens hundreds of times.
So, so it's already going on?
All the time.
So, but if you owned a bar on Main Street and you wanted to walk out the front door and go to Waterfest or go to the River Walk, you can't do that currently?
Correct. You can however, if you want to walk in, this is the fun example, and it gets in the weeds really quickly with the minutia that is Chapter 125 or whatever it's called. You can go to, for example, Bar 430, get a cocktail, drink it in their cafe ordinance, which we've already allowed and exempted the sidewalk in that instance. You can then put a tamper-proof, tamper-proof cover on it, walk across the road, walk into Opera House Square, open it and drink it there.
So, so we're doing this today?
We've been doing it for a century, probably.
Okay, very, very good.
Great. Anything else?
Councilmember Wojciechowski?
Thank you, you brought up a good point about that.
It's bad, just kidding.
But, like you said, people are already utilizing it, doing this. Is there an increased police presence in that area when you see people?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think there's ever been a need to. I mean, Chief can speak to it if he's here, but I, I've never heard that we needed an increased police presence on the River Walk, have we?
I'm not aware of any special trolls that we've done.
No, and I ask that just because it's been a point that's been made for, we might need an increased police-
Yeah.
...presence for downtown, so, and I know there's lots of concerns and I'm not asking you to talk about that, it's just a point I wanted to make.
It's a good question and one that we've obviously talked about, and we've, the group of us who've been working on this have talked about it at length. Our hopes are that there's not a need for a police presence in the future. The requirement was never built in the front place, but Chief Smith has really good reason for wanting to do that also, and being in front of anything bad that might happen is good. And if this is goodwill and being out in the public, that's great, but I don't, I don't think it'll ever be a requirement. And again, if it is, that first provision exists so that if there's a requirement for massive amounts of policing here, it shouldn't be happening anyway.
And hence, we'll pull the pin.
Exactly. And you can blame, as I told Matthew the other day, you can blame me personally if you'd like to. It doesn't need to be blame or, or winning. It's not about winning or losing, it's about seeing if we can make something work. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Next up?
Amy Albright?
Welcome.
Hi, Amy Albright with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I am in support of this and I'm asking for your support tonight. Just going to try to keep this short because everything that Jesse and Chris have said, you know, rings true with how we feel about the DORA. A thriving downtown is one that attracts people of all ages, races, identities, abilities, and backgrounds. Public spaces like our downtown thrive when there is a critical mass of activity that supports retail and restaurants, fosters social settings, provides a feeling of safety and security, encourages people to live and work in our downtown with extensive amenities. Downtowns offer a unique sense of place for residents and memorable experiences for visitors. If you think of anywhere you go, you probably do want to visit their downtown. We believe that this DORA pilot program can be a piece of making our downtown thrive and believe it's worth a try. While we haven't called the River Walk a DORA, it has been somewhat of a pre-pilot program in that people can carry their drinks from restaurants that are on the River Walk onto the River Walk. People enjoy active, attractive, dynamic public places, places they can gather with their friends, their neighbors, and family to eat, shop, visit, or just people watch. As a community, I believe, and we believe as the CBB, we need to be thinking about how we activate all of our public spaces in a way that enhances quality of life for our residents and provides an amazing experience for our visitors. They're really one in the same, which is really amazing, and I think we can get a lot done thinking in that regard. The DORA pilot program is just one piece of creating a vibrant downtown, but is one step that will give us a chance to activate downtown Oshkosh and set downtown Oshkosh apart by enhancing the experience for people that come downtown and enhancing the events that people attend. The stronger our downtown becomes, the stronger our community will be. This pilot program allows us a chance to try the DORA district downtown. Pilot programs are an excellent tool that provides a way to get by some of the what-ifs and actually make something happen. If it works, awesome. If it doesn't, we move on, but at least we tried. I thank you for your time and I hope you will consider supporting this pilot program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Nelson?
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Barb Nelson, and my husband and I are owners of Brinkley's Boutique located at 419 North Main Street. I serve as the president of the Member Co. Group, which is a group of business owners from the business district, and I'm also a member of the Board, Bid Board. First and foremost, you have several choices on the DORA program this evening. I'm here to tell you that as a business owner in the bid district, we are in favor of this program. During the Member Co. meetings, we have discussed issues that are of a concern. As business owners, if the DORA program does become an issue or creates issues, I can tell you that downtown business owners will be some of the first to bring these issues to you council members. We only want what is best for our downtown district and our own businesses. Brinkley's Boutique has participated in each of the summer and fall wine walks. Not only does the wine walk help financially to our small business, we also have returning a guest that come back from the event. We have never had a problem with excessive alcohol consumption or guests being, becoming destructive. The businesses who participate in the wine walk value this event as both for the awareness of their given stores and the revenue it brings to them. DORA would be, would bring the same benefits to our business as the wine walks do. I feel the demographics of the participants using this DORA program are very similar to those who attend Waterfest each Thursday night. To my knowledge, they have very few issues with attendees during or after the event. Waterfest, to my knowledge, is celebrating its 35th anniversary this year. If alcohol was a disturbing factor in this outdoor concert environment, I believe it would be celebrating this milestone anniversary. Thank you for your time, and I hope you vote yes on the DORA program tonight and make Oshkosh a leader in a progressive step. Questions for me as a business owner?
So, I, I got a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Miller.
So, how, how many wine walks have you experienced?
We, we celebrated our fifth anniversary last September.
Okay.
We do two a year, so 10?
Okay, awesome, and they've all been positive?
Extremely.
So-
Financially, and just as the exposure, for an example, I'm just gonna do some things that I've heard as a president of the, of the Member Co. For Brinkley's, it's a financial benefit, like-
Which is what we want all businesses to-
Well, yeah, yes, because for some reason, the bank appreciates me making my mortgage, so. But more importantly, it's not just, it's fire escape, for an example. You're not gonna attend wine walk and sit down and do, make yourself pottery that evening, but it makes you aware that this fire escape is available and you can come back and see it, which is what DORA would do too. Let's come downtown, let's walk up and down, what else is there going on that maybe I'm not buying that top tonight, and maybe I'm not painting pottery tonight, but I can in the future. So it's twofold why we feel this is a benefit.
Sure. So, Mark, do, do we lift the ordinance for, for wine walk? How, how does, how does wine walk happen? Do we, do we?
Unless the city attorney corrects me, basically that was a provision in state law that was changed several years ago that enabled the wine walks to be possible.
Okay.
Twice a year.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anderson?
Welcome.
You're not allowed to talk to him.
He's the buddy. Sean Anderson, 542 West 16. I didn't prepare anything. I'm not a read-off-of-a-piece-paper kind of person, but I think some of you know me. Anyway, I, I'm supposed to bring up too that, okay, so just for your knowledge, wine walk can be pulled twice a year for, by a city entity like the chamber or her. And you can do a beer walk every day if you want. Just wine is twice a year, beer is every day. Right? Okay, so we have one coming up, September. Anyway, what I'm, what I wanted to bring up is I have always, as a business owner, have always dreamt of having this amazing downtown. You know, like I want this thriving community and I want, you know, hustle and bustle and I want that stuff. I, I always joke, like, I want it to be like Gilmore Girls. If you've ever seen Stars Hollow, that's, that's the, the downtown I want, Oshkosh, right? And now, now you bring Stars Hollow to Wisconsin, I hate to say this, but you bring Stars Hollow to Wisconsin and you gotta add a beer, right? So now, the luxury that Chris has that I don't have is I can't go anywhere, I can't go visit Chris with a beer. I live, I'm in the same exact building as him, but I can't, well, I guess I could get there, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be great. It would be boring. Anyway, I'd be have to cut through. But I just don't think that, that this would be such a big issue. I think everyone is worried about the what-ifs, and if the what-ifs happen, then we address it then. I don't think that people are going to swarm downtown and become a drunken brawl. I don't think that's what's gonna happen. I would like to see people enjoying themselves and us have the hustle and bustle that we get during the farmers market and we get during Christmas and stuff, so we can get those days of activity, so we can have a thriving downtown, so we can have a thriving community. Let's be forward-thinking, let's be the first for a change, let's try this, let's, you know, worst-case scenario, the first two weeks suck and, you know, we're like, oh my God, what did we do? Trust me, none of us, none of us want brawls in front of our businesses, none of us. Those are broken windows and they're super expensive and really hard to get right now, right? The, one of the things that nobody else has touched on a lot is I do a lot of community events. I do a lot of fundraisers, I've developed fundraisers, I do fundraisers for these guys, you know, we do fundraisers at our store. And we have one coming up, it's called Point Nine for the K9. And let me tell you, if we could have beer on that Point Nine Walk, which is in the district, it would be well-received. Are they gonna be coming and walking their dogs drunk? Probably not. Maybe a few, I don't know, but it, I was at farmers market last Saturday or Saturday before, like 10 women walking down the street with drinks. It's already happening. This is just making it legal, I guess. I say, we get ahead of the curve for a change and try and do something forward-thinking. Let's be progressive, to steal Barb's word. I love the idea, I'm not gonna have huge gains from this except for a thriving downtown. And my business will do better with a thriving downtown, right? Erin, let's see. I guess if, if it's that big of a, you know, horrible and we're looking at pub crawl every single Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, you're gonna, we're gonna be the first ones here complaining to you, like, how did we let you talk us into this? None of us are gonna be like, woo-hoo, oh, my windows got smashed last night. None of us. You know, like, oh, look, vomit, again, you know? None of us are gonna be that person. What we want is a, a strong sense of community. We want an amazing time downtown. We want people to come and listen to music in the park and then go to Mabel Murphy's. You know, like, why can't A get to B, you know, without being on the River Walk or whatever? So that's my two cents is, you know, like, hey, let's be forward-thinking, let's get out ahead of this, let's make events better, let's make downtown thrive, let's pull more businesses and make more money and make everyone happier. Questions?
Are you out of breath?
No, I got plenty of them. I don't smoke. No questions?
No, I think you did a great job. Thank you.
You're scared of me, aren't you?
Dan Hinton?
Hello, I'm Dan Hinton from Winnebago County Human Services, and I work with Breakwater over at the, the Health Department with the Community Coalition. There are a couple things I'd like to, to talk about here with this that, that Breakwater has some concerns about. I heard some wonderful words about inclusion, everybody being welcomed, concerned about that. There's also some pieces to this that, that seem progressive, but I'm not sure that allowing the same thing everywhere is more progressive necessarily. So there's a current idea that this is going to bring in economic support. There's been no data and any other examples given about this. It's just not something we've seen. We've, we know there's gonna be some additional costs to the city about this. There's, there's gonna be at least some garbage and some, some policing that's gonna have to happen, signage, those kinds of things. Increased alcohol consumption never creates more safety. I think that's a fair statement. I think that would just, especially if you put crowds in with that, crowds with alcohol, probably not the safest kind of an idea. There's already permitted alcohol consumption on the, on sidewalks and beer gardens in the bid, that's absolutely the case. To expand that doesn't necessarily make that gonna be safer or better, and it may absolutely drive some people away, and this is where that inclusion idea, I think, is something we should be considering. There's a variety of people that really try to avoid alcohol consumption amongst other people. Folks in recovery, it's a standard in, in what they do, especially early in recovery. It's a really a hard thing to find, a place where they can go and not be around folks drinking. And even for a lot of them, for an entire rest of their life, it may be that, and they have families, and so they're gonna be down there with their families too, and getting, how do you measure them not being there? I'm not quite sure how that's done precisely. There's, there's already problems in Oshkosh with places that are serving alcohol with, in the last, well, the last six months, 284 calls for service from the police department have gone out to the Class B licensing in the, in the city. Forty-two of those calls were for violent acts, and those are within the areas that are currently under the standards. To relax those standards isn't gonna make that better necessarily. The, the idea that, that we're just gonna, gonna make everything better by making the rules more relaxed is, is a bit odd, I think. And we have to kind of consider the, the idea that alcohol is infused within the Wisconsin culture, and we pay dramatically for that. We pay so dramatically and we're so used to it that we don't even think about it. And it's, it's about $800 a year for each resident. And that includes the cost of binge drinking along with excessive drinking. That's gonna be increased. It's, it's something that we, we're not going to be able to make go away. The other folks that we're not paying any attention to at all are the folks who don't drink. That's about one-third of all adults in, over 18 in Wisconsin. We just ignore them. But about 35%, that keep, the number keeps going up, by the way. It's one of those wonderful things that I've noticed over the years of work I've done in, in alcohol and drug prevention- in alcohol and drug prevention is that number used to be about 31%. It's now around 35% in Wisconsin. That number of people who do not drink, who are over 18 adults, keeps increasing. And that's true in the United States. The trend is moving the other way with non-drinkers. And so, it's something we need to kinda pay attention to also as maybe that's progress. Maybe progress is less of that meeting to be around. It doesn't always have to be about alcohol. Something new seems progress. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much. Ms. Belcom? Anyone else?
Paul Spiegel? Spiegel?
Welcome.
Oh, welcome. He looks like it is likely he's gonna blow up in a little while. I heard the testimony. Oh, Paul Spiegel, 1970 Southwest Avon Drive. I'm the Chair of the Breakwater Coalition related to preventing adult and youth substance use within Winnebago County. I feel like because I have concerns that we are these naysayers and we don't want the downtown to grow, but everything I've heard says that the only way the downtown can become more attractive is we have to provide more opportunities for people to drink. And I see you guys nodding in support of that even up here. You know, is there not things that the bid could do that don't have to have alcohol as the base for it? That would draw families down. I'm gonna, and again, going back to the economics, the data and the information from the State Council on Alcohol and Other Drug Abuse, they had an article, May 1 Northwestern, I'd call it an op-ed or an article, and in it they say, generally speaking, "Wisconsin policies related to alcohol sales over the past decade have focused on increasing availability and accessibility to alcohol under the false assumption that the alcohol beverage industry was an economic driver." It wasn't for me. It was from a group of people much more knowledgeable than me who have studied this. And that is what they've come up. The people that are pro-this, I don't hear anything that they're saying, they talked to the people in Ohio. How did it do with your economics? I know that in the beginning, council asked him the question. They've never answered it. They're assuming, they're assuming there's going to be this huge change in the environment and this huge change in the economic growth. In my opinion, and our coalition's opinion, the only people who are really going to potentially come out of this are the alcohol-licensed places. Because you can't take that cup, if I'm right, into any of the retail stores, right?
Correct.
So, you have to slug it down if you're gonna go into the store or not go into it. I have some other points that I'd like to bring up as long as we're talking about this. The city staff created the need, instead of, because the OPD said they didn't wanna be cup cops, they said that any unbreakable transparent semi-parent containers except the beverages may be served or possessed in their original package or containers. That includes, I'm not a big beer aficionado or others, that's cans, that's plastic bottles, drollers. There's no size limit. There's no size determination. You could walk out of there with, I believe, a large supply of your alcohol beverage based on the wording that is there. We, as this coalition, are not trying to put under, using the downtown in that, this is for me personally, this system seems to be being run on a railroad to get done as fast as it can. And both sides, I believe from the city and their side, as much as they say they've researched it, there's a lot of questions yet. If I'm in the park, I can have my cooler, I can have all of my alcohol drinks in there. Now, I'm part of DORA, I can walk out of there and walk wherever I want, and no one's controlling the amount of alcohol that I'm taking in. The parking lots are not supposed to be used in the proposal for drinking. Who's gonna, who's going to enforce that? No one. I could drive my car up, I can get my own cans out. I'm not participating in buying anything from any of the establishments. And I take my cans of Pabst and I go out on the sidewalk and I join the rest of the group. One of the areas that I really am concerned about is that, I believe the Oshkosh Police Department has stated they will not be on-site on Saturdays until 3:00 PM. Anything goes at that from 10:00 to 3:00, from what I understand. I don't think any council member's gonna go down there and look and see what's happening. I think there are, I guess from this perspective, it seems that a lot of things were not really investigated or researched, and this was put together and it really seems very orientated toward increasing alcohol sales. And if truly that is what this community feels is necessary to grow and be vibrant, we are going in the wrong direction. I don't think we should be proud of that. The other issues that I think, I think a big issue is the fact that right now, they take a cup, they take, they take a can. Where did that can come from? Where did I buy it? Did I buy it at the bar, at Beckett's? Did I buy it some other? If I didn't buy it, I'm not supposed to be bringing my own in, I believe. Am I, am I correcting that, Mark? I'm not being able to bring my own personal liquor onto the site.
That's not the intent of the program.
What?
That's not the intent of the program.
No, but right now, how do you control that? So, I'm not saying, in my opinion, you know, that this shouldn't happen. I think it needs to be taken back and looked at carefully and come up with a good program and a good plan to do it so that it is successful. But I really struggle with the fact that the only way this community believes it can grow is to put more alcohol out there on the streets, and everyone said it, that came up here. If I have a dog walk, I'm gonna have a better dog walk if everyone can have a beer and walk their dog. I'm sorry, I, I'm really kind of troubled by that. And I spent 30 years in the public health field and dealt with these type of things like Dan Hinton, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Doesn't appear so. Thank you very much. Anybody else registered to speak to this?
Not under this item.
Is anyone else in the public, in the, in the audience wanting to speak to this before we go to council discussion? If you can register with the officer over there, I believe he's got a, if you can give him your name and address.
Deputy Mayor, we could put him on the honor system and just let him talk now and sign later.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. If you'll do that afterwards, there you go. If you could give his name and address.
Yeah, great. Kyle Faust, I'm at 127 West 17th Street, but I own 600 North Main Street, which is Winner's Sports Bar and Grill. I am urging council to approve this. I do see some, some great things coming from it. I would like to comment, I know that there's been a lot of discussion about people coming down and just drinking, but owning a bar and restaurant, I do have a lot, have a lot of people who come that don't drink, that come with their friends, their family, and I think it's a great opportunity for people, not just drinkers, but also drinkers, you know, to come together and enjoy something at the same time. I think it's great, we, the farmer's market people park in our parking lot. I think it's become the designated farmer's market parking lot, so I would think it would be great for people to come in, grab a bite to eat, maybe grab a beverage, whether that's alcohol or non-alcoholic, and enjoy the farmer's market and other things that the downtown district has to offer. So, short and sweet for me, but that's all.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. If nobody else, I will...
We have our good points and we have our bad points. But like the chief said, he can't be down there on Saturday. Well, you know what? I don't know what you're gonna do now because you don't have the officers to enforce and to do their job. They're trying to hire and get things going, and you know what? You guys are talking about alcohol. How about drugs? It's no different than having drugs. So, there's my point.
Thank you, Ms. Keener. Counsel, if we'll take a motion in a second, 22-271.
So moved.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, I think we're still on the motion.
My apologies.
For waiving the rules.
My apologies. Thank you for the correction. Yes, I need a motion to waive the rules and adopt on first reading first.
I moved away the rules and adopt on first.
Jesse catch-up there. Nope. My apologies. I went out of order. The motion in a second. Any discussion on waiving the rules this evening? Madam Mayor?
Yes, I, I guess as far as the waiving the rules and adopting on the first reading, I didn't hear or see anything in the presentation or in the staff report that supported the reason why this needs to be rushed. It appears to be coming very quickly, and as council has seen by the number of emails that have come in, you know, there are some concerns that, that this is perhaps not completely thought through. So, I, you know, I guess that's one piece of it. I would say that we need to go forth with our second reading, so I will not be supporting the motion to waive the rules and adopt on first reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, this doesn't feel rushed to me because this is the third consecutive meeting we've been talking about this, but I am curious if someone can offer an explanation, whether it's city staff or a fellow council member, about why we won't adopt this on first reading.
City Mayor DeRola.
Yeah, I'll give it a try. I talked, I talked very briefly about it in the second to last page. The earliest effective date for a DORA, if it was approved tonight, would be July 7th, based on the publication dates, because the earliest that the newspaper can print these types of public notices, our code requires it to be, the ordinance cannot be effective until the day after publication. The earliest it could be published is on Sunday, which means it wouldn't be able to take effect till Monday. The first Thursday would be, would be July 7th. In discussions with Ms. Mitel regarding implementation, there are some things that have yet to be considered by council. Boundaries and things like that are probably the most important. That's gonna change how they communicate that to their, to whoever is impacted by that, so they need a couple of weeks to do that. So, they would need this so they can get the wheels in motion to start educating the public and everything. They feel that even if it's approved tonight, the earliest they could begin implementation would be July 15th.
Follow-up, if I may, Deputy Mayor.
Actually, if Councilmember Ford had hit the button before you started, but you'll follow right after.
Yes. I get one victory a night.
It's a big one.
No, I've tried to be consistent. Anytime we've had an offer to waive the rules, and if there can be a compelling reason, presumably whether it's a developer or somebody that they can offer, something that personally affects them as to why it needs to be adopted early, I'm fine waiving the rules. Doesn't mean we're gonna pass it right now. That's another discussion to be had, but I'm certainly fine waiving the rules.
Thank you. Council, Madam Mayor?
Yes, if I could just add a couple of points that have been made through, again, the numerous correspondence as well as some of the folks here this evening, and as is evident in the draft amendment to the ordinance, we do not have quantification or any reference to the volume or the, the volume of the number of drinks.
Madam Mayor.
That's not clear. I could see perhaps I missed it.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Your internet connection's a little poor. You're breaking up here and there during your statement.
I'm gonna turn my video off.
Sounds good.
Let's see if that works.
Thank you.
Is that any better?
Try that.
All right. Just saying that, as was pointed out, the, there is no quantity or volume referenced in the ordinance amendment. That's been pointed out in several correspondence and folks speaking tonight. There's not a reference as to, I think some of the Ohio communities, actually, I'm sitting in Ohio right now at the moment, the designation of who would clean or how we would handle additional litter, and there is reference in the staff memo about additional signage that would be needed in the parking lots, but no fiscal impact. There are just a number of things that we still do not have to properly, I think, review this this evening. And that's all. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion on waiving the rules? Seeing none, if you'll take the role on waiving the rules.
Ford?
Aye.
Obergauer?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
No.
Paul Mary?
No.
Carrie Fyde?
Need a motion in a second to approve ordinance 22-271.
So moved.
Perrin, you got her for the, for the second. Excellent. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to, I understand I have to amend both of these if I wanna change the map. Is that accurate, Lynn?
That's later.
No, hold on.
You have, right now, you have the ordinance in front of you, and the, all the ordinance does is set up the, the DORA, that you can pass a DORA by a separate resolution. So, the specifics about this, the particular DORA that's being brought to you, those are in the resolution.
Okay, so I don't need to amend anything here, just the...
I'm not sure what you wanna do with your amendment, but the, if it's about the particular DORA, then you can wait for the resolution.
Okay, so if I wanna extend it, it's the second one.
Yes, that's the resolution.
Thank you very much, and I'm sorry I didn't clarify that.
Councilmember Ford, and then followed by Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Yeah, I guess I have another point of order. Are we able to flip these? Because the design of this is fairly important.
That would be council's purview?
Well, the current ordinance doesn't create the exception for the DORA. So, that's why I had the ordinance first, because the ordinance will create the exception for the DORA, then the resolution follows with this specific DORA being created. So, the current ordinance doesn't really, it doesn't make sense to flip them. You have to create the exception first and then deal with it.
Can you, could you clarify, city attorney, that if we do pass the ordinance, there's no, there's no way that one of these could be created or opted into without a separate resolution that's passed by us?
Correct. That's, yeah.
I know where you're going, Mike.
No, I didn't, sure.
You can pass the...
The design matters greatly.
Yes, yeah, I know it does.
And I don't want this to open any kind of back door.
Gotcha. That's not my intent.
You can pass the ordinance.
I didn't think it was.
And until you pass a resolution, then creating the DORA, the ordinance just sits there and says, you could create a DORA. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wojciechowski.
All right. Thank you. And let me just preface by saying I do support this, and I will be voting yes, but there are concerns that have been addressed, and I do wanna just acknowledge and thank the folks from Breakwater who have presented their information and their concerns. It is valid. They are real concerns that are happening in Wisconsin. But one of the big concerns that I've talked about earlier and that I've addressed is the potential negatives from an increased police presence. And I know we've talked about, oh, well, we can stop this if there's an issue, but my concern is that we won't see that issue until too many problems have happened. I just want to make sure and make it clear that, and you've said this, Mark, but I wanna, you know, reemphasize that this is not an open door for people to be harassed by law enforcement who are, you know, trying to utilize the downtown and be a part of this new program. I just hope that this doesn't deteriorate, you know, especially people of color or others who are, who feel threatened or, you know, don't feel as welcome with that increased presence. I just hope, I don't see why it needs to change. I hope that the police presence, you know, doesn't become an issue. So, I just wanna make that known.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Go right ahead.
Just to follow up regarding Councilmember Wojciechowski's... Just to follow up, uh, uh, regarding Councilmember Wojciechowski's reference there, uh, we did receive several emails and several folks contacted me, um, concerned that this ordinance change did not, uh, have an opportunity to go through the diversity, equity, inclusion committee, and I'd like to make a motion to lay this over until such time that that can happen with regards to specific equity concerns in regards to the ordinance change.
There's a motion on the floor, any second.
A second.
Any discussion on the motion to lay this over? It sounds like the motion is to lay it over until such time as DEI has had a chance to-
Yes.
To respond? Any discussion on that? Uh, Councilmember Ford, sorry.
Yeah, I know that this keeps coming up, and this is going to be a, a discussion about, about process. I don't think this is specific to DEI or any other committee, but if, if we want to create processes by which certain pieces of our legislation need to go through committees, we have to do it in a systematic way. We have to, we got to stop just springing it on us at the last minute, because that's not any way to make consistent policy. That goes against, uh, the very idea of, uh, you know, treating everybody the same way, so I, I wish this would have come up earlier. Um, it didn't, so I, I can't support this right now.
Just, uh, Deputy Mayor, speaking of springing things on folks, the way that this is being moved through so quickly, it is not fair to those who have not had an opportunity to have, uh, to hear about this or to weigh in. So, in, in terms of fairness, it is only fair that we handle this consistently with having a second reading on the ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a point, if you wouldn't mind chiming in and allowing me to, uh, call on you, Councilmember Erickson had pressed her button before you, okay? Councilmember Erickson, you're up, and then followed by Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Thanks, um, I'll just say, I think, you know, I, I do wish we had a better process for recognizing when these types of ordinances come up that do have an equity or inequity impact, that, that would automatically go, uh, to DEI committee. Um, so, in lieu of not having that process, you know, very clear, I think I am supportive of this, uh, being laid over to go to DEI committee because of the concerns that have been raised over the last couple of weeks, uh, with regards to equity impacts. So, I'll be supporting it going to DEI.
Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Yeah, I'll just say for context, um, being the DEI council liaison, um, we, our last two meetings were canceled because we couldn't meet quorum, um, so that's why you're kind of seeing this really quick need for this, because we didn't have as a opportunity to meet, to discuss it, even if, you know, two months ago we wanted to discuss it, we didn't have that opportunity, um, uh, because of that, and our meeting was literally yesterday, so we didn't have time to discuss that. Um, but with that said, um, I do recall us, this being a similar, we had, we, this was a similar vote on a different item where we felt it needed to be sent back, or one member felt it needed to be sent back to another committee, and we, I voted no at the time for basically the same reason Councilman Ford said, so I'm going to be consistent and vote no on that. But I do hope in the future we do, you know, when these items have equity problems tied to them, we do bring them to those committees.
Any other discussion on the motion to lay over? Seeing none, if you'll call the roll on the motion to lay over.
Ford?
No.
Ugrar?
No.
Hanson?
No.
Miller?
No.
Wojciechowski?
No.
Erickson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Original motions back on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll actually go on this one.
A couple of questions.
Go ahead, Madam Mayor, you can go ahead.
No, I'll yield.
I've got lots of questions on this one. I've had lots of questions since the concept came about. Um, it's one for the first time in a long time, until I walked into this room tonight, I had no idea which way I was going to go on this. Um, that doesn't happen very often around here, and I'm being honest about that. From, from a consumption side and a, um, how we're viewed, not only within the public here, but also outside of the community, you know, besides myself, I assume that the council up here always is looking towards, what's the vision, how are we perceived in the community, how are we perceived with our peers, as well as those who want to invest here and come here. Um, you know, trying to do as much as we can with that in mind, right, trying to build Oshkosh up and make it a better community for all. With that said, to, to the two gentlemen's points regarding, you know, it seems as though alcohol is the driving factor of fun, you can only have it with alcohol, or that downtown will only thrive with that. I asked those direct questions to, to many of the supporters of this, um, early on and throughout the process, because I have that same, same concern, that, that's a, that's a big concern of mine. Um, but on the other hand, just because I maybe not, don't like something, doesn't mean I shouldn't try it up. Maybe I shouldn't be willing to have, have some tolerance to try something new, to try something different within the bounds of, of a trial. I'm going to support it tonight reluctantly, um, very reluctantly, and in my mind, it's on an absolute short leash, um, in terms of the performance of it and, and how it's received within the community. Um, I think to several of the gentleman's comments, this will push some people to not visit downtown and to not visit certain activities downtown. That isn't inevitable. If the net gain is zero, then I'm not in for this in the long haul. If the net gain does not improve relations, does not improve the activity and the vibrancy for as many as possible, I can't support it long term. Um, and I know that's extremely hard to judge, and it's going to be, um, it's going to be very hard to judge that, it's going to be anecdotal than anything, more than anything, but, um, it's going to be on a very short leash in my mind, so that's my comments on that. Madam Mayor, I think you had something as well.
Uh, yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor, and, uh, I really appreciate everyone that's weighed in on this. Um, certainly, uh, I'm not suggesting we go back to any kind of temperance movement, but on the other side of this, can we honestly say that we cannot have fun and be vibrant and add to quality of life without walking from point A to point B with a drink in our hands? I mean, come on, this is something that we have spent years trying to overcome, a reputation in Oshkosh for public drinking, excessive drinking, binge drinking, and quite honestly, there is no discussion yet about the actual fiscal impact, the $30,000 that's estimated just for this season alone, of how this would be paid for. And to expect the taxpayers to, uh, pay for this indulgence is very unreasonable, and our resolution talks about being reasonable. This is unreasonable. Thank you.
Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Sorry, I had a question for staff. Um, someone was speaking earlier and they were talking about it. Um, now, from my understanding, when we were talking about this resolution, it was, you had to have a specific cup to go on the sidewalks for this district, but now someone's saying you can bring cans, bottles, is that accurate, or is it still just the designated DORA cups?
It may be more appropriate to wait till the resolution.
Okay, is that what outlines those specifics?
Yeah, I would, I would think that'd probably be the best place, and I, I put the memo with the ordinance, but the memo probably more appropriately should have been with the resolution, because the devil is in the details as we are, as we are learning, uh, but that would be the appropriate point to discuss that.
Okay, I'll wait till then, then.
Thank you. Any other discussion on ordinance 22-271? Seeing none, if you'll call the roll.
Ford?
Aye.
Ugrar?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
No.
Paul Mary?
No.
Carried five.
Next up, the resolution 22-272, approve designated outdoor refreshment area DORA. Is anyone registered to speak to this separately from the last one? I don't think so, okay. I'll take a motion in a second from counsel.
So moved.
Second discussion, Councilmember Miller's up first, followed by Mr. Wojciechowski. I beat you. Um, again, small victories, right, Mike? Uh, so, I would like to amend, uh, the designated outdoor refreshment area map to include 600 Main and 700 Main, and originally I was opposed to this, but some, some people came to me, um, who had thought this process out, um, and said, if we do the DORA, visitors to our community are not going to recognize that it ends here, and there is a large gap after 700 Main to any other establishments that would be included in this. So, um, given that and the fact that it makes a little bit of sense to me, um, I would like to include, uh, 600 block and 700 block of Main Street.
Before, there's a second, can I confirm that would probably be referenced as Exhibit B in the packet?
Uh, I don't have it in front of me, sorry.
You can say yes.
Yes, thank you.
Sounds good. And a second to that? And discussion? Miller, you were done after that last one?
Yeah, I am, thank you, sorry.
Mine's unrelated to that, so I'll wait.
Any discussion on the amendment to include the 6 and 700 block, Exhibit B, Mr. Ford?
Yeah, I just want to make a quick point. I was, um, I, my preference is that this is on the bid boundaries. I, I'm willing to compromise. I've said to other, to many people, that's not the hill I want to die on, but I want to be clear that this is a partnership between the bid and the city. Uh, I know some of the language that has come out of the bid, saying that, you know, if they're going to pass it and it's our thing to own, um, it can't be that way. It's got to be a partnership, because if things go wrong, we're in this together, and like it or not, it came from, it came from the bid. Um, so just, I want to make it clear as we move forward, um, that I still do view the bid as the, uh, the partner and that, that the person we will come to if issues do arise, and I hope that they are prepared to speak in that role, act on that role, excuse me.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you. I, I think what Councilmember Ford is saying to the bid is, we're looking for one throat to choke, so, let's make this happen.
Deputy Mayor?
Madam Mayor, go right ahead.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to ask, uh, perhaps City Manager or, uh, staff regarding, uh, the exhibit that shows the map of the bid and, um, clarify, uh, because it would appear that that would include sidewalks and areas on the easternmost and westernmost, um, at the outside boundaries, um, I, I guess for lack of a better word, the backside of the bid facing neighborhoods and churches, um, and whether or not that was the intention to include that, because I know there's carve-outs for the parking lots.
My understanding is that the request included the, uh, the side of the, the sidewalks, including the perimeter sidewalks of, for example, the east side of, or, excuse me, the west side of Jefferson Street, not the east side, and the east side of Division Street, not the west side. And I think that was regardless of whether it was Exhibit A or Exhibit B.
And I'm sorry, just to be clear, if I may, so it would include the quote-unquote backsides of the businesses and those sidewalks, is that what you're saying?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
I see. And, um, is it accurate to say that the, the bid boundaries, even though it's described as being, you know, Main Street, uh, and, you know, those southern portions that go beyond Main Street, it really, um, for transparency purposes, um, is somewhat deceptive, because it actually does go out to Jefferson in that neighborhood, uh, it, out to Division in, uh, Middle Village, up to, uh, Midtown, over to Fourth Ward Historic District, and, uh, also over to River East. Would that be accurate?
It goes as shown on the map, and I'm not sure if, uh, anybody can put the map up, but regardless of whether it's the, the bid or the Exhibit B that Mr. Miller has proposed, there are areas that go back to, uh, go somewhat into the, uh, across from the residential area, for example, uh, with the proposed Exhibit B, it goes down, uh, I believe it's, uh, uh, excuse me, Mount Vernon, uh, it goes down Mount Vernon around the library, uh, and over to Wagu before it backtracks to State Street. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, just, just to be clear then, this does impact folks within 100 feet, certainly, and, and typically, uh, for consistency's sake, we would ordinarily notify any impacted properties of, of these type of changes, correct?
Yeah, that, you, you're referring to what would be done for a zoning request, and this is not a zoning request, and it doesn't, that doesn't, uh, that's not necessarily done for something like this.
Being that it's being described as a geography and not an event, and perhaps this is a question for City Attorney, um, geography talks about place, but events talk about time and place. Um, could somebody clarify whether or not it's an accurate depiction that this is geography only, given what's proposed?
I'd say that the motion on the floor is a specific geography, uh, within the resolution, the entirety of the resolution, there are provisions about time.
So that would make this a series of events?
The way the resolution's written, the area is designated and the time is designated, and council has the ability to amend either of those components of that resolution.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion to amend, excuse me? Yes, motion to amend to include 6 and 700 block. Seeing none, we'll take the roll on the motion to amend.
Ford?
Aye.
Ugrar?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
No.
Paul Mary?
No.
Carried five.
Back to the original motion with the amendment. Councilmember Wojciechowski, then Ford.
Thank you. So, as we were discussing that, I found a note about my question. Um, so, as it says, alcohol beverages sold by individual servings for removal from a license premise for consumption within the DORA shall be served in unbreakable, transparent or semi-transparent containers, except the beverage may be served or possessed in their original packaging containers if those containers are not breakable, plastic or cans. So, I guess, was that staff's decision, or I just, like, I get not taking a can and pouring it into a cup, you know, for a couple of reasons, but that seems like it leaves the door open for people bringing their own cans, um, and plastic bottles without first buying it from-
So their license will allow them to sell, um, beverages in the original containers.
Mm-hmm.
And the language that limits that to plastic or cans was intended to kind of mirror the parks' language now, that we don't allow you to have glass containers in the park.
Yeah.
It's a breakage issue and a safety issue.
Well, I, I get that part, like, not having-
That's where that came from.
Okay, I get that, but I, I kind of think that this is different than a park, you know, you are usually at a park to watch something or sit, this is, the whole premise is being able to walk. Um, I don't know, like, I, I don't, I'm not too torn about it, I just feel like it's counterproductive if people are bringing their own cans and bottles and that, you know, that seems like it's taking away from what the businesses are trying to get from this, so, I don't know, that, that's just a note. Um, one other question, I don't see anything, so maybe you could clarify this, this doesn't limit the amount that someone could take out onto the sidewalks, correct? So, if they buy two DORA cups, they could bring them both out, or they could have more than that if they wanted, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess just-
With respect to the question about, because staff, this was something that staff was going through, one of the most important things that we felt was necessary was to minimize the, um, potential conflicts between law enforcement- the potential conflicts between law enforcement. And I think Mr. Spiegel accurately, even though I didn't say it directly to Paul, I use the term "cup cops." I don't want our police officers out there in a situation where they're questioning, for example, in the park, in either Riverside Park or Opera House Square, for example. As Ms. Lawrenson pointed out, somebody could have a beverage that is legally allowed in the park, and are we in a position where we want somebody to say, you have a can, you don't have a can, you're breaking the law, you're not breaking the law? We're putting our officers in a position where they're going to be creating conflict. The purpose of the officers is merely to be out there for public safety purposes, not necessarily detailed enforcement. Now, they will, if there's some blatant disregard for that, for example, we've specifically recommended excluding parking lots.
Yeah.
We don't want to create a situation, for example, where there's, for lack of a better term, tailgating. We don't want that. So, if we notice that, then we would step in. But, you know, we have to use common sense with this and not create conflict points. And that's really, that was the motivation behind what we did. That was not a request from the bid. The bid was originally, we'll do Dora cups, and we're not saying you can't do Dora cups. You could also do Dora cups from a promotional standpoint, or just so that people recognize that you did acquire them at one of the establishments. But we just felt it would make it easier to enforce.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that, and that does make sense. I just, just something I thought I'd throw out there, but I just hope we don't have people bringing coolers of alcohol sitting on the sidewalk outside our bars, and they could be spending their money there. I don't think it's going to be a problem, but just something I thought of.
Thank you. Councilmember Wojciechowski, Councilmember Ford's up next.
Yeah, I'd like to offer an amendment to change the times of the Dora for Saturdays to be 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., consistent with the other days.
I'll second.
Motion, excuse me, motion and second to amend to 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. on Saturday. Any discussion regarding the motion to amend?
Deputy Mayor?
Did you, you wanted to...
Yeah, I'd love to explain it.
Councilmember Ford's going to explain, and then Madam Mayor's up next.
So, throughout this, I've tried to stay consistent. Like I said earlier today, I think we've had three or four different discussions. I think this is the third discussion up here about this. My logic for being open to this experiment is tied to it being a unique way to bring people downtown, stimulate economic activity, and activate more public space. That logic, I can wrap my head around, 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., when if you're downtown between 5:00 and 9:00 p.m. in the bar district, this stuff's happening anyways. It's just happening inside. It doesn't apply to the farmer's market for me. I've had a problem with that. No one should be surprised. I've brought that up over and over again. That's already a vibrant, activated public space. The farmer's market was asking for it. You know, I'm always open to responding to what constituents ask about, but, you know, they sent us all an email saying they were neutral on this, so they weren't in favor of this, or weren't against it either. But they weren't advocating for it. Sunday, I was walking around, had a member of the recovery community come up to me and tell me that this is a slap, slap in their face. That's a real emotion that's out there, and it's not a fringe opinion. I get a little insulted with some of the, some of the way we've talked about this, as if that this is the most obvious thing in the world, or, you know, we can already drink on the Riverwalk, so I don't drink everywhere. I mean, this is different. I mean, this is a big change, and people have real concerns about it. And we can't pretend that people aren't concerned about this. They are. I really wish there would have been more coalition building along the way. I think there was a lot of discussion between proponents of this idea and the city, a lot of discussion between opponents of this idea and the city, but no one was talking to one another. Whether you believe it or not, from my serious tone, I'm actually an optimist, and I think that a lot of the fear and confusion could have been avoided. But here we are. So, I'm asking my colleagues to support this amendment as a compromise that recognizes that legitimate concerns many Oshkosh residents have about this idea. I hope the Dora opponents spoke passionately tonight. See this as a show of good faith, that we do hear their concerns, and, right, it's 67,000 people, we're an at-large system. That's one of the, I put this on Facebook today, that's one of the most rewarding parts of serving on the Oshkosh Common Council, but it's one of the hardest parts of serving in the Oshkosh Common Council. How do you, how do you make policy when you're guaranteed to get half the people angry every time? And I think that's, I think that's compromise. And I hope the bid and the other Dora proponents recognize that we are willing to try something new and creative. This is not, this is not a failure of imagination. Maybe it took longer than, than you wanted it to, but there's a reason for that. We had to talk this out. So, just speaking for me, this amendment is a necessary compromise if I'm going to support this, because without this, I don't, logic doesn't flow for me. So, thanks for considering.
Madam Mayor, and then Councilmember Miller after.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. If I, if I may offer an amendment to the amendment, I really appreciate Councilmember Ford's recognition of the farmer's market and some of the unique circumstances there. But if I may move to amend, in addition to Saturday beginning at 5:00 p.m., also ending the program after Labor Day, if council would entertain that.
Right now, we have a motion to amend to end after Labor Day. Any second.
Second.
Seconded by Erickson. Any discussion on the motion to amend to end after Labor Day?
I'm sorry, does the motion also include 5:00, that's, we're doing that completely separate, or completely separate and together?
Matt, City Attorney, what would you prefer in terms of keeping this clean right now? We've got amendment to an amendment.
They're two separate things.
Okay.
I think it would be cleaner for the minutes to do them as two separate motions rather than an amendment to an amendment.
So, then I should ask for this motion, the second, withdraw temporarily?
I'll withdraw temporarily.
And the second as well?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. So, acknowledged, so we're back to just amend 5:00 to 9:00 Saturday. Any other discussion on that amendment? Councilmember Miller, thank you.
Thank you. I couldn't be happier to support that. So, thanks for bringing that up, Mike.
Hearing no other requests, if you'll take the roll on motion to amend to 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. on Saturdays.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugarar?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Period seven.
So, now we're back to the main motion. Madam Mayor, do you want the floor?
If I may please, first of all, before I offer that second part of an amendment to it, if I may ask, who's paying for this? As I understand it, in the staff memo, they're recommending that we absorb this cost, although the, I think, original discussion was about the bid paying for this. That's part one of a two-part question here. And if it were to be backed up to Labor Day, what would the estimate of the cost for police and/or cleanup of that $30,000 reduce to by shortening the season to end of Labor Day?
City Mayor, roll.
I don't know if I'm in a position to do the math specifically, but you're talking about approximately six weeks, so it'd probably cut at $10,000 to $15,000. But I would say that's just a spitball estimate.
I think, I realize we can't hold yet, but if I may go ahead and offer, reoffer the amendment to place this pilot program ending at the end of Labor Day weekend, if council will entertain that.
A second.
Motion and second to amend to end at the end of Labor Day weekend. Mr. Miller's up first, and then Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Thanks, Matt. I truly believe all of our efforts tonight, hopefully, well, hopefully they are, they're unfounded in everybody's concerns. I think this is going to turn out to be a lot about nothing. And the fact that it's a pilot program, I think we do have to see it through. I can just see, you know, some, some fall festivals or some fall get-togethers and, and some winter festivals or something like this. So, that's specifically why I wouldn't support that amendment, Mayor. I, like I said, this is a pilot program. We got to see, see it through, and I think hamstrung the process right out of the gate is unfair to, to the participants. So, I'll be voting no on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Thank you. I have a question and a comment. Mayor, could you give reasoning as to why? I know you mentioned the money, but are there other reasons why you want to cut it shorter?
Well, certainly, as we saw a number of, excuse me, I'll start, restart my video, trying to save bandwidth here. Certainly, the financial aspect, and, you know, that $30,000 doesn't even include, like, for example, in Akron, Ohio, you know, there was objection here because, again, there was not quantification or volume described. But they did at least, and I believe in maybe Savannah also, one of the communities that was mentioned, there are 20 ambassadors, I'm sorry, 20 extra garbage bins and cleanup ambassadors that are also paid for in that program. Still don't have clarification on how that would happen, but reduction in costs. And also, for folks who are settling back in with small children, young families, and noise issues and litter issues, and kind of after the end of the summer, hunkering down, kind of getting serious for school and such, just to give a little bit of peace of enjoyment for those four neighborhoods that are impacted around the geography.
Thank you. My only comment is, I hope that whatever date we decide on, it's not to exclude a certain group of people. And I know I mentioned this last time, but there's, seems to be this that we need to hold the hands of college students when 21-year-olds make up a large portion of people who utilize the bars on Main Street. I think that would just be hampering business if you're trying to limit them. And I see the September 29th through October 8th, I'm not exactly sure what that is. But I don't know, I just hope we keep that in consideration, that the same as other people here in Oshkosh.
Well, that's exactly, I'm so sorry, Councilmember Mayor Wojciechowski, this is exactly what's happening in this, in this resolution. They're blacking out dates that overlap with pub crawl. And, you know, it's basically creating a pub crawl to replace pub crawl, but then accepting those students out of it entirely. So, that's exactly what's happening here.
Any other discussion on the motion to amend to end at Labor Day, after Labor Day weekend?
So, personally, I had similar thoughts, Madam Mayor. Shorten the run, shorten the trial period, if I was going to support this. I had similar thoughts to Councilmember Wojciechowski. I have, I have concerns that we've effectively said we don't want pub crawl in the city of Oshkosh. We have done that. It's not, it's not secret. And yet, it's okay for us to encourage what can be described potentially as a pub crawl every weekend for, you know, 11 out of 13. It's not that much different. So, I've got some serious concerns regarding that part as well. We've moved away from this, you know, the Sloskosh mantra and this, this, how we were known, either within this community or within the UW campus community. So, I've got those same, same thoughts and concerns. My one thing that, that says to me, I'm okay with how it's written right now, is that we can end it at any time ourselves, the City Manager can pull the plug immediately as well. And as I've stated before, the support I have for this is, it's just past 50%. The leash is extremely short in my mind, and I would be the first one to, to, to make the motion to bring this back, to shut it down at the council's discretion, if I saw some of those same things, some of those same concerns. So, I'll support, I won't support the motion to amend. I'll let it go the full length in my mind. If there's no other discussion, take the roll on motion to amend to end after Labor Day.
Ford?
No.
Mugarar?
No.
Hansen?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Wojciechowski?
No.
Erickson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Failed 4-3.
Back to the resolution. Any other amendments or further discussion?
Thanks. Can I ask, and I have some thoughts too on this, but are there specific criteria or measures that are in place that we'll be using, maybe City Manager, to kind of monitor how this is going? What indicators would we use to say, is this successful, or is it time to potentially pull it?
The main concern that we're going to have is public health and safety, and there's several elements to that. One, the Breakwater folks were very wise to ask for a report. They made a public records request, and we provided them with the information. That's where some of the stats were cited in terms of number of calls and number of calls involving violence. And we're going to monitor those. And I think Assistant Police Chief Shani is here to, he can certainly discuss that. The other one on the health and safety side is going to be garbage. The bid has arranged for a local nonprofit to do some cleaning on Fridays and Monday mornings, but that won't take care of Friday and Saturday nights immediately. And, and I've made it very clear to the bid that I have expectations that they will have their people clean up, because we are not putting an extra crew on overtime to go downtown on Saturday and Sunday mornings to clean up. That is, that would be an additional cost that I think would be unacceptable. So, I've communicated to them. And that, within, within the way this ordinance, this resolution, excuse me, is drafted, I will absolutely make that call if I don't have the cooperation for the businesses to be responsible and clean up in the evening. And I'm purposely looking at them to get nods out of their heads, and they're nodding, and that's what we've talked about. And that's, and it's going to be a trust issue. And they're trusting me that I'm not going to pull the plug as long as they're taking care of their end of the bargain. I think we have a good enough relationship with our business community that we can make that happen, but they also know that I will do what I need to do, and I'm not kidding you. And they know that, and that's why we're cool. But that's, but that's something that, that I will take very seriously. And certainly, it will be unacceptable for, for violence or things like that. With that said, this does end at 9:00. It was specifically recommended by the, by the chief, and the bid reluctantly agreed to the 9:00 timeline. It sort of goes to my mother's adage, nothing happens good after dark. So, the idea is to shut it down at sundown so that we minimize conflict points.
Councilmember Erickson, anything further?
No, I think that's helpful. I think one thing I would maybe encourage is, you know, after the pilot is over, you know, doing some sort of surveying or something to get some feedback of residents around this district, just to get some of that input on how their experience was with it. Be helpful information.
I think that's a great idea, and I'd certainly welcome any suggestions to make sure we do that, because there's, a lot of great concerns were raised on both sides of this issue this evening.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, City Attorney, can you confirm, and this is how I read this resolution, but I know not everybody reads these things, this sun sets October 31st, 2022.
Correct.
So, this will have to come back before this body if we are to, to make this permanent, do another pilot. And I think that would be the appropriate time for us to get some of those measures. And I think it's fair to say, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth there, but that's the expectation of this body, that we will have some quantitative data to evaluate.
Any other discussion?
Deputy Mayor?
Absolutely. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Just a final, I guess, comment, and that, you know, in our core strategic planning elements, we talk about strengthening neighborhoods. We talk about public, we have requirements... requirements for public participation. But we are, in fact, for the second time in as many council meetings, weakening neighborhoods, not strengthening them, by turning our backs literally and figuratively, by not supporting quiet, peaceful, drug-free zones. And also, I would remind council, you know, just a couple months ago, we, we passed a resolution, we did, we discussed at, at length environmental justice lens with items going forward. And I, I guess I'm, you know, somewhat disappointed here that the preparation of this policy analysis did not include standard zero, do-nothing alternatives. It only presented an either-or scenario of all or some, rather than none, or let's, you know, flesh this out. So I will not be supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Any further discussion? The clerk will please take the roll.
Ford?
Aye.
Uberauer?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
No.
Paul Mary?
No.
Carried five.
It is, we've just finished up, 22-72. Why don't we take a brief break? I think some of the audience are going to leave. And we'll take a, a five-minute break. Be back in a little more than 10 minutes.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Resolution 22-273, a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of approximately $8,615,000 aggregate principal amount of water system revenue bonds, series 2022D of the city of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, Wisconsin, in such amount providing details prescribing the form of bond, awarding the bond to the best bidder and providing for the payment of the said bonds and covenants with respect thereto. Anybody registered to speak to this? Thank you. Motion in a second. Don't all jump to it, I guess. I think we have somebody here from Ellers. If you wouldn't mind telling us how we did.
This is Mr. Harry Allen. This is not, you know, he has hair. It's not Todd Cave. But Mr. Allen is servicing our account as well these days.
Mr. Allen, welcome. If you wouldn't mind telling us how we did and giving us a view of the landscape.
Yeah, of course. So tonight, or earlier today, we took bids on the 2022D and the 2022E. So these are our sewer and the water bonds. Two weeks ago, we sold the GO and the stormwater bonds. We're pretty pleased with how the pricing came in today. It was almost exactly at the pre-sale numbers that we showed you before. There was some market movement over the last two weeks. It went up and then it came right back down. So we're basically exactly at the same prices that we were looking at two weeks ago. So we're really happy with where that came in. We came in a little bit better than expected. We had three bids on both. The winning underwriter was a Baker Group for both of them. Both their bids were very similar. And on the water bonds, we came in 14,000 or 13,500 less than we expected. And on the sewer, around 35,000 less than we expected. And both the bids were a premium bid. So we're able to go ahead and downsize both of these issues. So you're actually borrowing less principal. So on the water bond, we were able to decrease that by 300,000. So the ordinance says 8.615 million. You're actually issuing 8.315. And then on the sewer bonds, we decreased those by 550,000, so down to 14.82 million. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions, Council? Thank you very much. Appreciate the hard work.
Yeah, of course.
Any discussion at all? Otherwise, we can take the roll.
Ford?
Aye.
Uberauer?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution 22-274. Before I read that, City Attorney Lawrence, and the revised one in our packet is, does have a slightly different heading because of the dollar amount. Does it matter which one I read? Would you prefer I go off the revised amended one?
Actually, I think the head, the titles stayed the same.
Okay.
The amount.
The amount changed.
The amount is, is different, but they, because that's what had.
Yep. You're good if I read off of it.
Yep.
All right. Here we go. A resolution providing for the issuance and sale of approximately 14,820,000 aggregate principal amount of the sewer system revenue bonds, series 22E of the city of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, Wisconsin, in such amount providing details prescribing the form of bond, award the bonds to the best bidder and providing for the payment of said bonds and covenants with respect thereto. Anyone registered? Thank you. Uh, motion in a second.
No move.
Discussion. Seeing none, if you'll take the roll.
Ford?
Aye.
Uberauer?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next up, resolution 22-275, approved settlement agreement with Beechwood Plaza Hotel of Oshkosh LLC, Perrin's Hilton Garden Inn for the property tax assessments for tax year 2021, 2022, for property located at 1355 West 20th Avenue. Anyone registered to speak?
No.
Thank you. And motion in a second.
Move. Second.
Discussion.
Kelly, before you sit down. Do you want to just tell the people at home real quick what this is about?
Actually, this is, I was involved with this one.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Lynn.
So, um, this is for the tax assessment for the Hilton Garden Inn. The 2021, 2021 value was set at about 7.5 million. The owner of the property alleged it was worth considerably less. We did mediation on Monday, June 20th. The city was represented by an attorney, Stafford Rosenbaum, through our insurance carrier. We also had our assessor and our contract assessor involved. We looked at the comparison between the various hotels in the city of Oshkosh. And we are recommending a reduction at this time. It results in a, remember in here, results in a refund of approximately...
37,000.
Thank you. 37,645 dollars for 21. That does include all the taxing jurisdictions. So we would charge back to the other jurisdictions, and that's shown on the attachment resolution relative portions for each taxing jurisdiction.
Great. Thanks, Lynn.
Yep.
Seeing no other hands, we'll call the roll.
Ford?
Aye.
Uberauer?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Last resolution of the evening. Resolution 22-276, provide recommendation to Wisconsin Department of Transportation for Jackson Oregon Street Bridge design. Anyone registered to speak?
Yes. Joy Haneman?
Yep. Come on up. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. Joy Haneman, 1228 Dunnett Downs Drive, Madison, Wisconsin. My name is Joy Haneman. I'm a partner with Merge Urban Development Group. We're the development team that conceptualized the redevelopment of an approximately six-acre assemblage along Jackson Street. Our conversations with representatives of the city of Oshkosh began in 2018, and we acquired the properties in 2020. In 2021, we opened the Rio Building, home to the Oshkosh Food Co-op and 60 residential units. With help of staff, council, and community, we proposed a multi-phase development on those six acres. And we prioritized things that aligned with the Imagine Oshkosh master plan, specifically of greater connection to the city's natural resource assets, including the Fox River, and smart growth principles, including mixing uses, prioritizing multimodal forms of transportation, making sure we're thinking about walkers, bikers, and cars, and shielding parking lots behind buildings to create active and welcoming street fronts. Representatives of the Merge team had taken part in stakeholder meetings with the DOT, and we've been tracking the bridge reconstruction priorities from various stakeholders' points of view. The drawings that we submitted shows the intended placement of our mixed-use buildings and the heights and distance between the proposed structure and the high bridge under M2, which is the off-alignment sketch. You guys have those. I think several, several sketches were submitted. So just to be sure that we have the accurate one. The two that I'm going to be referencing is the M2 sketch that was printed and provided outside of your packets. This is, to our understanding, the most recent off-alignment high bridge that extends the, the, the bridge to the connect, the right-of-way. It, it doesn't really come back to the original road until Pearl Street. So there's a blue line and a red line that shows the right-of-way. There, there we go. So this is what we're looking at when we're considering how we're going to execute the concept. And what stands out to us is just how close this 15-foot retaining wall is going to be to spaces that we intended to be active spaces, commercial spaces, and residences. The plan that we had been tracking for quite some time is another sketch that was submitted, which is C3. That provided about 60 to 80 feet for us to work with. The new plan that we've recently been looking at, the M2 sketch, cuts that in about, in half, to some areas where the, the, our building and the retaining wall are going to be only about 28 feet apart. So we're opposed to the latest M2 sketch because it undermines the intent of the development plan and limits our ability to effectively bring additional housing and commercial users to the edge of the Fox River, the site that we refer to as Site J. It's where Maxon Corner is, the first phase is being construction, constructed currently, and is known as 417 Merian Road. When staff and committees were leaning toward an on-alignment high bridge recommendation, we were exploring ways to buffer the high bridge. We discussed additional stair access points from the bridge to connect pedestrians to Jackson and the river. This newly revised off-alignment plan makes the execution of our redevelopment plan impossible because, as I mentioned, it cuts that buffering space in half. If this moves forward, we truly regret that we will not be able to build the next phase as intended. The marketability of the residential and commercial uses, uses, uses will be too heavily impacted with the canyon between the buildings, between the building and the retaining wall, and our civil and development teams have serious concerns about the constructibility of the plan, given the pinch point, which is also identified in the M2 sketch, for the sewer relocation within the right-of-way. It does not appear that this plant has been fully vetted. We're respectful of the priorities of our neighbor, city center, and would welcome the opportunity to collaborate on a plan that meets their priorities and allows us to deliver the city a viable mixed-use building along the waterfront. That's all I have, but I'm happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Haneman?
Yeah, so if I heard you correctly, I mean, you're saying that under this plan, that this development doesn't happen?
The off-alignment plan, we would have to go back to the drawing board. We're not going to try to buffer a commercial space that lives 15 feet under a retaining wall, 28 from, 28 feet from that retaining wall.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else registered to speak?
Yes. Jim Larson?
Welcome.
Hi, Jim Larson, 1369 Roar. And I think Kurt can come up with me, he's got some things to say also, but it's interesting to see what was just mentioned here because that's the first we've seen about them having the same problems that we've got. What diagrams can we bring up, Kelly, for the, can you bring up the exist when we were overlaying in James's office? We did have the opportunity, as we talked last time, to meet with engineering, and I want to just point out, so everybody understands, I don't know if I could, maybe we can just reference this. If you were standing in front of Beckett's and look directly west, I hope everybody understands that you would see a wall that's 14 feet high, that's as tall as our parking ramp. So as you come over the extended bridge, you're actually looking at our parking lot. Furthermore, the ramp, our concrete ramp that is the main access of the second public emergency vehicles, as well as the main entrance to US Banks for their employees, that, at that point in the ramp, the drawing is gone. At that point in the ramp, where the ramp would hit Jackson Street, Jackson is still eight feet above our ramp. So the problem exists that.
Above your ramp entrance, Jim? Okay, thank you.
Above the entrance, or great. So the problem that exists is, one of the drawings shows from the state accessing our ramp simply by moving the ramp further back horizontally till it hits the eight-foot elevation. That cuts our parking lot entirely off. There is no access whatsoever, access that we've had for 57 years. And that access, by the way, is, is our access to about one-fourth of our available space. So not only are we down in a hole, our access is, is really difficult, the Beckett's disappeared. So we got to James's office, this kind of reigns for, if this is an option, it's not a solution. One of the ways that might be able to mitigate some of the harm to our parking lot, to remove part of our parking access ramp, part of the thing we didn't talk about in James's office, by the way, is the giant W-Bus walls and part of it. But to curve the ramp in such a fashion that we can at least come around the corner about where the Chamber of Commerce building is, and finally be able to enter our property because that's about the point that we're back at, great. So no access, and all the way down and around, and finally up the ramp, and finally to your parking lot. That does at least let us see a kind of a panoramic view from the new intersection, at least back into the city center parking lot, in front of Beckett's and the other things that we're trying to develop here. This site's been problematic to develop from day one. It's difficult enough with having access, and just wanted to show this as an option, even though it's certainly not a solution.
Well, can you put up the one that shows the, a better drawing of the, of the new ramp location?
Did you want that one or the other one, Kurt?
Kurt?
Did you want this one or that one?
That one. If you'll, if you'd lower it a little bit. Okay. This shows two things. It shows Jackson Street being moved to the north to align with the bridge. What it doesn't show is there's a right-of-way on the north side of Jackson currently that will allow this to happen. What it'll do is it'll create a, a turn lane at that intersection of Marion Road, Division, and Jackson. So it makes sense to, to align the roadway to meet the bridge, which will give us an extra 24 feet in order to come closer to being degraded. Now, as you can see with the ramp being moved, our entrance is off Division Street, which gets us away from the traffic issues of entering on a raised-up area of the bridge. So we've eliminated that aspect. Also, if you don't do that, what, can you go back to the original? Okay, if you see the, the Jackson Street, there's a black dot right at the bottom of our ramp. If you extrapolate down, you'll see where the height difference is. Now, if we were forced to put a ramp in, which is showing here, and you've got eight feet, and we had two feet to 20, I think that's 160-foot ramp, two feet to 20? No, 140. If it's seven feet, it'd be 140. Right? Is my math okay?
I think it would be 80 if it's two to 20 and you're coming down eight feet.
Yeah.
That would be 80 feet, I think.
Okay.
If I'm understanding what you're asking.
So that would go past the entrance to the corner suites would be a ramp. It just doesn't work for us. If you go back to the one where we moved the ramp, you know, with, with you guys, you know, I appreciate the concern of where I would have the same thing, but if you, if the roadway is going to be straightened, and Jackson is going to be straightened either way, it does give us some more room, and we do get a better view coming in if we move the ramp over. Now, some of the drawings have also said that we're parking lot neutral. Well, the reason we're parking lot neutral is they've taken away the spaces here and added them to the US Bank area. So it really isn't apples to apples. People that go to Beckett's are not going to park at the US Bank parking lot unless it's full. So this is a collaboration between engineering, Jim and myself. It's not an end-all and suggestion. We kind of determine it's a lesser of two evils. We know the flyway bridge is going to go in. We're trying to mitigate the damage to our property. We've got 16 and a half acres. We're the largest payer to the bid. I think we're the largest downtown taxpayer. So we're a big contributor to the city. We employ almost 2,000 people, and we're trying to make this as least disruptive as possible. Any questions for the two of us?
I'll just add one thing, since we just heard from Merge. We've now moved the road 24 feet more towards you.
We haven't.
Well, we're, it was suggested that we align Jackson Street, which makes their situation probably even worse.
Councilmember Wodzowski?
I guess maybe you started answering that, but my question was going to be, how do you address or alleviate the concerns of those who spoke before you from Merge about their potential properties being diminished with this as well?
Well, moving Jackson Street to the north is not, to the west. To the west is not a decision of ours. It's a decision of Public Works. It just makes sense that the road just doesn't happen to align. If you look at some of the drawings, Jackson Street where it approaches the bridge is offset. So that's something that engineering is going to do regardless of our input. I have concerns for their project as anything because I live here, and I want them to be successful. I'm sure they want us to be successful. We will have people who live there come and shop with us. We have people who shop with us, live there. So we're both in, I think, the same area of concern. We have different issues. I'm hoping it can meet in the middle. Our ramp configuration really doesn't affect them. I think it makes it better because there aren't a bunch of headlights going up a ramp, looking at the second floor of their building, people exiting their parking lot. And so if we can move that away, the ramp has sides on it, obviously, so that'll minimize the headlight issues. So I hope we can kind of meet in the middle. I think they probably feel it's a lesser of two evils, too. So there's going to be some planning to do. We have times on our side. We're open for any other suggestions, but the ramp issues are a major concern and access to our parking.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any other questions or discussion? I will go.
Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor. I, I guess my question would be more procedural here. If we're going to divide this out by the different alternatives?
The, most of the resolution, we don't need to separate anything out by alternatives or, the resolution states, city of Oshkosh recommends that the DOT an alternate for a fixed bridge reconstruction similar to alternative M2 with driveway connections, only Division Street for the Jackson Oregon Street Bridge Design. So right now, the resolution is only for M2, or a alternative of M2.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll go. All right. First, I want to, I want to thank the group from city center and your willingness to meet with city staff at, you know, kind of at our request, but I think also as willing participants. And I thank city staff for, for doing that, for meeting with them and additionally hearing their concerns. I will, I never speak for council, the full council, but I'm confident in saying, you know, one of our jobs is to mitigate impacts in terms of how it impacts our business community. And I don't want to pick one winner and one loser purposely. And I don't think anybody else up here wants to do that. We want to try to do what's best for an entire community. Want to try to do what's best for the development to, to ensure that, well, specifically, Merge development is, is successful, and it's a vibrant piece of our community down there. We're invested in ourselves. We want it success. But we also have an existing strong partner in the city center, and we've got to ensure that they have the ability to succeed in the future as well. So it's, it's a balancing act. I'm appreciative of, of the discussions you guys have been willing to have. I'm in favor of M, of, of way the resolution's written, M2, some sort of alternative that addresses those parking and access concerns for city center. For city staff, I have a question, I guess for Mr. Robbie more than anything. We have a significant amount of right-of-way on the west side of Jackson Street, and if, and correct me if I'm wrong, it was maintained for this very reason, or this was one of the very reasons that a potential road construction project, bridge project, just in case we needed it.
That, that is one of the reasons, and that is one of the reasons, as, as I met with the city centers folks, you know, from a street development standpoint, you know, recently our department had approached the DOT and said, you know, look, we want to look at getting this street centered in the right-of-way as a landing point. That does a lot of things for us. One, it will allow us to develop a turn lanes at the intersection of the realigned Division and Marion and Jackson Street that would give those dedicated turning movements to both of these developments. You know, so that, that is a lot of the reasoning why, you know, that additional right-of-way is there so that we could figure this out. With that being said, the, the DOT's concepts that we're dealing with here are very high-level concepts. You know, I, I think we're at a position right now where we do need to provide some recommendation to them, otherwise they are going to pick something on their own and go forward. But I think we have an opportunity to word it in such a manner of something similar to this, but with these other concerns that need to be worked out in the final design. You know, they have a couple more years of work. They're about one year from starting detailed design, and then they have five years' worth of design work. You know, as I had mentioned to, you know, anyone I've talked to, you know, this is not the last time we're going to be having conversations with any of the adjacent property owners, be it the two property owners on the north or the property owner on the south side of the river. We're going to be having conversations between our department staff, DOT staff, and the DOT design consultants for likely the six, the next six to seven years before this starts construction, and then the two years or so during construction. So, you know, as, as long as, you know, both of the property owners are, are involved, we're going to be talking to them for the next eight years or so.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Mr. Miller?
No, James, you answered all of my questions. I just wanted everybody to hear that this is, this isn't even the beginning yet, so and you covered that very well. Thank you.
Mr. Ford, you're up next.
Yeah, similar comments. So what I'm hearing is we can, we can give a recommendation, a high-level recommendation with the expectation that both property owners will be part of this process as the specifics get drilled out, correct?
Correct.
All right, so people, they can both leave here reassured, at the very least, that they're going to work together to mitigate these concerns the best we can.
Yeah, and, and unfortunately, given the short timeframe between the last meeting and this meeting, and, you know, Mr. Bertrand's scheduled vacation, you know, I was not able to involve him in the meeting that I had with the city center folks, and I know Community Development Director Nyforth met virtually with the Merge staff earlier today, and unfortunately, I was already committed to other things, so I could not join that meeting. So there, there's a lot of discussion that needs to be had and, and can and will be had, but, you know, as I mentioned, I think we need to keep some focus on the fact that the DOT, you know, said at our last meeting, well, that they, they could wait this long, but they didn't feel they could wait a lot longer without it holding up their process. And I think giving a, a, a high-level recommendation, if you will, will allow us that time to continue working with the property owners, the DOT and their design team, to meet somewhere in the middle of, of where we're currently at.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, anything from your side?
Uh, yes, I, I would echo and appreciate all council members' comments, appreciation of staff going the extra mile, certainly on this, but I, I really want to recognize the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, the Sustainability Advisory Board, the Plan Commission, and the Traffic and Parking Advisory Board for their work on this as well, hundreds and hundreds of hours collectively to come to this point. So thank you to all.
A final comment from myself. It's about mitigating the impact, right? This is going to be, this is impactful for a lot of parcels, but really specifically it's four parcels. Two are developed, or one, you know, one is developed fully, one's under development, and two are vacant currently. But this is, you know, it's bigger than that. It's really, this is the main thoroughfare through the entire city of Oshkosh, and so it's, it's about what's doing best for us for the next 75 years. We can't undo it. In terms of clear direction to staff, right now, it's written, fixed bridge reconstruction similar to alternative M2 with driveway connection on Division Street only. Is that clear enough direction in terms of Public Works's interest level and centering in the right-of-way, or do we need to get clearer on that for you to have our intention?
I think we understand the discussion.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, and I think it's going to be ongoing discussion with the Merge representatives, the city center representatives. Oh, okay. Yeah, there might be some others.
I apologize.
We're technically still in the public input part, and there's no motion on the floor.
Is that clear enough direction in terms of public works's interest level and centering in the right of way? Or do we need to get clearer on that for you to have our intention?
I think we understand the discussion.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah. And I think it's going to be ongoing discussion with the Merge representatives, the City Center representatives. Oh, okay. Yeah, there might be some others.
I apologize.
We're technically still in the public input part and there's no motion on the floor.
Thank you for correcting.
Just throwing it out there.
I'm a rookie up here. Thank you for the reminder.
And it's 8:50. It's all been a long day for everybody, but.
So then if, why don't we do this? We'll go to the remaining people who'd like to speak and then we'll go back to the floor for us to discuss further. My apologies on that. Gentlemen, if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next one up.
No one else.
No one else? Oh, okay. Okay, sorry. If we could take a motion in a second to put this on the floor.
Second.
Thank you. Apologize to City Attorney Lawrence and she was, her blood pressure was probably boiling over there on us, so. Further discussion on the resolution on the floor. Sounds like staff is clear, is understanding of our intent and if we approve it as is, the product will be what we would like it to be.
It's going to involve input. This is, this is hardly over yet. It's just really getting to the next step.
All right. If there's no other discussion, we'll take, we'll call the roll.
Board?
Aye.
Mugrauer?
Aye.
Hansen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
Thank you. Council member, council discussion, direction of city manager and future agenda items. First thing up, schedule for consideration of fee to replace special assessments. City manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Mugrauer. We have been working closely with R.A. Smith, Jeff Mazanek on the, the elements of utility fee to replace special assessments. We are prepared to have a report delivered to you by the end of this week. So then I think it's now time to talk about the process we want to follow, how, how you want to schedule those things. What I'd like to do is to have, get that report in your hands first thing. So get you that report for this weekend. I know that's exactly what you want me to do over the July 4th weekend. I apologize for that, but I would think it's appropriate that we put it on a subsequent agenda to kind of map out how we want this, the process to go, not for consideration, but literally the process. I have made, you know, many representations to the Chamber of Commerce that because of their previous opposition, that it's appropriate that we do have some dialogue with them and that has not happened yet. And so that would certainly be part of the process. Long range finance, I think it's appropriate that it gets back to long range finance for review and then public input. So my intent would be for the next meeting to just get your initial thoughts on this and then see where we go with next steps.
Sounds good.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, Madam Mayor, go right ahead.
A question for city manager and the clerk. As we consider this process and the timeline, I would like to find out about what kind of timing would be required. There've been some residents who have asked for this to be placed on an advisory referendum as a ballot measure question this fall. And I'm not quite sure that we've considered that previously, but I guess I'd just like to know timing wise in our process where that might fit in if we were to give that direction.
I don't know if we're in a position to answer that question now, but we can certainly investigate that and see what that would do to the process. It would absolutely impact the process. I just can't tell you how much or how, how little.
Thank you.
Next up, virtual option for meetings. Councilmember Erickson, I think you had this on the agenda.
Yep. So I just wanted to put this on the agenda and kind of get some initial thoughts. I've heard from a few residents and one of the Transit Advisory Board, a resident came to talk about the need to have a virtual option available for public participation during council and board and commission meetings. I understand that it'll take, you know, some effort and cost to have that option available, but I do think it's, it's worth bringing that back for public participation and some of the challenges that we, we know we have in City Hall with accessibility physically. So wanted to just bring that up and see what other council members' thoughts are.
Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Yes, thank you so much for bringing this forward. We actually at DEI had a conversation about this and it seems the consensus of the committee, where they feel very strongly that we, they, we should bring the virtual option back. You know, one of our charges as the DEI committee is, you know, even in, in the name is, you know, inclusive. And it's hard to be inclusive when we are leaving certain people out who otherwise might be able to participate in, in our meetings. So I'm open to, you know, exploring and bringing that back.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, question for Councilwoman Erickson. So you, you're thinking virtual participation. So basically people can testify, share their, right? I'm not firing on all cylinders here. Public comment, that's what that was. Just be able to do that online if they want to.
Yes.
All right. So that wouldn't be something where we're virtual or, right?
Correct.
The intent is for the, the audience.
Yep. Just public participation.
Okay. No, thank you. Yeah, I'm all for anything that increases accessibility.
If I may ask, Councilmember Erickson, would that also include, because I've also had several questions from multiple boards and commissions about adding that option in for the other boards and commissions, both for public and for board members?
Yeah. I think some of the, the reasoning I brought this up was initially just for public participation. I personally would also be supportive of opening that up for board member participation, for board and commission members. So whether that's within this discussion or separate, open to other thoughts on that,
Seeing no other ones at the moment, I think, if you don't mind, previously we've asked staff to, to give us information in terms of not just costs, but there is physical costs, actual monetary implications, but also staff time, which comes with a cost, as well as technology and, you know, the implications of, of the full, just the option itself has an impact. Maybe it'd be appropriate for city staff to give us some information in terms of, and it may be just regurgitating an, an old memo. I'm trying to remember if we had one. We had requested it at once or twice in terms of the impacts of what we may need to support something like that on the city side. I know some of this is also, Windveil County has changed and made a, you know, an adjustment in terms of how they put their meetings out there. We're receiving some information on that and some, and some commentary from the citizens. But maybe you could supply us with some information and then a follow-up discussion at the next council meeting so we can have a little bit more vibrant discussion?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful because there's really three levels that have been discussed. And I think the mayor mentioned it, but I think both council members, Erickson and Wojciechowski brought up, the three levels are council and staff, which is currently permitted for the convenience of the city. Boards and commissions, which currently are prohibited in the public, which has not been included either. So I'm hearing all three levels that you want to have that discussion and that analysis, for lack of a better term, to, to identify what that would be. It would pretty much take us back to what we were doing during the peak of COVID because all three levels were, were participating virtually, but this is with a hybrid option. You've heard my opinion on hybrids. It's awkward, it's difficult, but I, you know, I'm hearing the same thing. I'm hearing boards and commissioners say it to me. So we'll certainly do the analysis and bring it back for council to talk about because once you taste it, it's awfully hard to, to go back on that. And I, I think that's what we've seen.
City Attorney Lawrence.
I also just want to bring up that we do have some boards and commissions that have hearings or that have items that come before them that have significant due process rights. I want to highlight that because when we're dealing with those kind of issues, virtual participation does not always bring you the same quality of, of hearing on that.
And I think there are, and I didn't say that, but I certainly intended that there are some boards and commissions that I would not recommend for, for those very reasons that it could make it awkward and maybe even subject to challenge because we didn't follow certain processes. Some are just going to lend themselves to in-person. Not a lot, but there are some specific ones that Ms. Lawrence and I have discussed many times. So we know what those are. It's not some new revelation on our part.
I think it's worthy of discussion. I know councils, council has weighed in on this topic several times during the last two, two, two and a half years. Some good vibrant discussions. I know we, we collectively decided it was best for the, the, how we, you know, do the business of the city, that it is best when we are in the room. I hope that's remembered. Just because it's out of convenience would be a problem for me. Just straight convenience because somebody's not wanting to come into City Hall, but because they can't is a different thing. I mean, right now, we have one, one member participating virtually. You know, our rules state, you know, the intent of it was for, really for, you know, quarantine and other things. That was our real intent. But there's not a big difference between that and one of us just saying, I want to sit in my basement for a council meeting and not showing up here. And there's, it's a very thin line that we walk. So I think it's worthy of discussion. So thank you, Councilmember Erickson, for bringing it up.
I would only ask that if you would indulge me, and I know the mayor wants to say something as well, but because of the timing that this request is coming across, Mr. Newman, for example, is on vacation this week. I will, I cannot promise it'll be the July 12th meeting, but we'll certainly work on it and get it back to you as soon as we collect all the information.
Sounds good. Mayor Paul Mary.
Yes, just a touch on this as well. The last time we did a study of our boards and commissions was in 2017 with 2016 information. And I think that this possibly lends itself to perhaps an updated study of the boards and commissions because it also, I can appreciate Deputy Mayor's convenience statement while, while some folks, like you said, would like to sit in their jammies and in the basement. But certainly I think that staff time, if, you know, again, going back to our strategic plan about effective government and staff time as well as other folks' time, you know, is there an opportunity for us to update the study of what our boards and commissions consist of and how they operate or interact?
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, closed session for city manager mid-year review, July 26, 2022. Just a heads up, after the regularly scheduled council meeting, we'll meet in closed session that evening. More details to follow on that. Future meetings, strategic planning, July 12, 2022 at Oshkosh Corp. Community Room. City manager, anything extra on that?
No, we'll send you the details as we lead in there. I, I know that Nicole, our new consultant, has been reaching out to council members. If she hasn't already contacted you, or if you haven't contacted her, I'd ask you to touch base with her. I think she wants to, to get a feel for where each of you would like the process to go. And there's a lot of new folks in the two years since we were last doing this. So I think it'd be great if we, we did that.
No, it's well put, City Manager Roloff. Realized the other day, it was, the last strategic planning we had was shortly before COVID hit. We were just in the midst of a first state of emergency with a cyber attack and only three of us, Mayor Paul Mary, Councilmember Miller and myself, were at that meeting. So definitely a new, a new council and a opportunity to make sure we're on the right path collectively for the City of Oshkosh.
The good old days.
Future workshops, budget workshop number one, including Long Range Finance Committee, July 6, 2022, 5:00 PM, that room over there?
Yes, with one question. We did list it at 5:00, but I wanted to make sure that that, and we've already noticed it for 5:00. However, I know with some work schedules, that might be a challenge. We're certainly willing to start it a little later if, if that's something that it might, it might get you all there at this, at the appointed time. We also want to let Long Range Finance know if we're going to change. Any thoughts on it? It's, it's, it's next week, so it's kind of do or die. Is 5:00 okay or do you want us to move it back a little?
Seeing no heads saying that they want to change it. Madam Mayor.
Yeah, just a clarification or question. This kind of marries up with our item A, 31A. And I guess my question is, since we're going to have that report, is Long Range Finance only going to be seeing that report this weekend also on the special assessments? And given that it's, that CIP, I believe, would it be, I guess, included in that joint workshop for the, the process on our next steps with the transportation utility fee or replacing special assessments?
I think it might be a little early. I certainly have every intent of making sure the Long Range Finance Committee gets a look at it, but literally you're going to get it Friday, you got a July 4th weekend. I think it would be a little soon to be talking about it on July 6th. It's really more about a process to get that going. I don't necessarily think it impacts the CIP because the CIP, at least at this level, is two things. One, it's, it's debt and it's the plan for the projects themselves. And I think you can proceed even with the uncertainty over special assessments. But when we get to the meeting on the 12th, I would think that those, those issues need to be talked about. How do we address all those issues? And there's going to be a lot to it. I just, I wouldn't want to send a message that we're going to rush this through because that could cause some, some pushback.
The intent of including Long Range Finance in budget hearing one, as a reminder, Long Range Finance is going to take up the topic of, of debt and as well as how does that marry with our facility needs and the long-term, the long-term needs of this community and really our city government? That's the intent of, of having them there because we'd like for Long Range Finance to hear it right from you guys in terms of what you're looking for. It is my job to liaise back and forth, but it'd be really nice if they hear it right from you guys in terms of what collectively this council wants them to focus in on for their efforts to try to, to give them a, give us a recommendation on, on future facility, you know, debt and, and where we might be going. So a little early on the special assessments probably for Long Range Finance, considering council wouldn't have had a chance to even collectively discuss if they want to move forward with anything.
Yeah. I don't see any problem providing Long Range Finance with a copy of the report. Do you, Russ?
No.
Yeah.
I guess I, I just wanted to reemphasize the points that Deputy Mayor made. We were preparing for the workshop to kind of focus in on basically, you know, the funding sources from property tax levy that we've included in our operating budget, debt, a little bit of discussion on the remaining ARPA funds and just kind of the overall framework of our capital improvement planning process. And I think that's going to devote most of the workshop time. I think your discussions on a special assessment, either with or without Long Range Finance is really for another day, another time.
Moving on, council member statements and announcements, report of council liaisons for boards and commissions. Anyone have anything to report? Silence. All right. Moving on, city manager announcements and statements. It's all yours.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Mugrauer. Staff's asked me to make sure, make a few announcements. Certainly our Fourth of July festivities, the parade at 9:00 AM, it starts at Main Street Nodder up to Irving over into Menominee Park. We're excited about that. The Festival Foods fireworks show up Menominee Park will be at dusk and the food trucks will get there about 3:00 PM and be there until 10:00 PM, just when the fireworks start. So a lot of family fun activities out there, looking forward to that. And if food trucks aren't enough for you, the Public Museum Auxiliary pie sale is on July 10th. Ms. Phillips asked me to point that out and the auxiliary is very excited about putting this on. And the outstanding issues update is in your packet. This, I'm probably going to be provide, not probably, I will be providing with a second quarter update. So this is sort of a placeholder until you get that in advance of my mid-year review. That's all I have.
Thank you, City Manager Roloff. If there's nothing else, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
How about you motion first?
So moved.
Oh, yeah.
Motion second.
Mr. Miller, Mr. Ford, if, if the clerk would like that and all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening. Thank you for all your efforts tonight.
Safe travel, Lori.